Would board members come to the table, please? This June 22, 2017, regular meeting of the Fairfax County School Board will now come to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, a moment of silence, and the performance of the National Anthem by the harmony singers from Spring Hill Elementary School under the direction of Deborah Rudd.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own. Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming, whose bright stripes and bright stars through the perilous flight were the ramparts we watched, were so gallantly streaming, and the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there; oh, say, just let stars sparkle then, o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave.
Beautifully done. Thank you so much.
I'd like to say thank you to our Spring Hill students and Principal William Oak. Thank you, parents, for bringing your talented students to sing to us tonight.
In order to comply with Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia, it's necessary for the Board to certify that since the Fairfax County School Board convened a closed meeting on June 22, 2017, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board during the closed meeting. Do I have a motion? Moved by Ms. Palchek, seconded by Ms. Hines. All those in favor? And that is unanimous. A few announcements before we begin tonight's meeting. Item 4.02, Agreement with FH FUR for McLean High School, has been removed from tonight's agenda. If you would like to review a copy of the agenda and any agenda item that is being discussed tonight, that information is on the table by the auditorium entrance. Tonight's agenda is available by going to School Board on the FCPS homepage and selecting Board Docs under the upcoming Board Meetings -- Board Meetings. The meeting also is being streamed live online. Select School Board from the full menu, then click on the Watch Live button on the School Board Meetings webpage. Please remember to turn off or silence your cellphone. We now go to Item 2.04, Virginia School Board Association Business Award, and I call on Mr. Wilson for motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Virginia Tire &amp; Auto has partnered with the Career and Technical Education team at FCPS for several years, naturally with the automotive technology program as the alignment couldn't be better. Throughout those years and still today, they provide field trips and hands-on intern opportunities for students at 13 of their storefront locations across northern Virginia. The intern program is a four-to-eight week opportunity, and as an intern, students experience all aspects of the business, including the call center, customer intake, workflow management, vehicle diagnosis and repair, parts management, and vehicle delivery. Soft skills like resume building, interview training and practice, and job shadow opportunities also are provided. Virginia Tire &amp; Auto has taken their partnership a step further by providing interns with product installation demonstrations as well as industry training from the Tire Industry Association, furthering their knowledge and skills about safety and regulations impacting the industry. This partnership has expanded the opportunities for students, supported the FCPS automotive program's connection to business and industry, and has seen 20-plus interns become employees of Virginia Tire &amp; Auto, making it a truly authentic workforce development partnership. The efforts of the Virginia Tire &amp; Auto team to establish, grow, and sustain such a meaningful and relevant partnership that directly supports the work of our automotive classroom teachers is to be commended. Thank you to the entire team at Virginia Tire &amp; Auto, and congratulations on being named a Virginia School Board Association 2017 Business Honor Roll recipient. I now move approval of the following resolution. Whereas the public schools and local businesses are an integral part of this community, and whereas many local businesses play a crucial role in supporting our schools, and whereas the economic health of our community, state, and nation depends on a strong public school system, and whereas collaboration between local public schools and local businesses strengthens schools and the business community alike by providing a well-trained and highly educated workforce, and whereas an excellent public school system is vital to the quality of life in this community and fundamental to preserving a strong democratic society now and in the future, and whereas Virginia Tire &amp; Auto employees have dedicated their time, energy, and resources in support of increasing career awareness, student engagement, and real connections between school and work. Therefore, be it resolved that the Fairfax County School Board names Virginia Tire &amp; Auto to the 2017 Virginia School Boards Association Business Honor Roll, showing appreciation for the firm's ongoing support of this community's public schools. Your work has aided the community in focusing on the goal of providing the best public schools we can for every child who attends them.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mrs. Schultz. Mr. Wilson, would you like to speak to your motion?
Madam Chair, I think that the -- what I just read describes very well the Virginia Tire &amp; Auto's commitment to the public school system, so I have nothing further to add.
Mrs. Schultz?
I'm just going to say that I'm proud of business -- businesses in our community like this that are not just the career path readiness business partners, but also the career and technical education readiness path. And that makes me exceptionally proud because we need good jobs, and this is the type of demonstration from an organization in our community that both supports students while they're in school and then creates career opportunities for them when they leave us.
Thank you. And with that, I'll take a vote on the resolution. All those in favor, raise your hand. And that passes unanimously.
At this time, I'd like to invite leaders and staff from Virginia Tire &amp; Auto, who have so generously supported FCPS and are here this evening to join me and others at the dais for a picture with the Board.
Item 2.05, Virginia School Board Association Business Award, and I call on Ms. Darren Kofax for motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Crop MedCaf has provided over a decade of support to heating, ventilation, air conditioning, and refrigeration for HVAC and R and Skilled Trades Program at Edison Academy. Over the span of those years, they have supplied guest speakers for the academy's career service speaker series. They have promoted HVAC and R careers and our courses to prospective students and parents by participating in our fall and spring open house events and the Apprenticeships and Skilled Workforce Career Fair, helping to educate parents about the outstanding career opportunities students may have in this career. They've assisted with recruiting other skilled trades organizations to participate in the annual Apprenticeships and Skilled Workforce Career Fair. They've connected students to well-paying apprenticeships and growth-oriented jobs at Crop MedCaf. They've donated necessary materials and equipment to the HVAC program, and they participated in professional development activities with students by providing interviewers for events. I want to thank the entire team at Crop MedCaf for giving your time, efforts, and for supporting student learning and student career decisions. You are now a member of the 2017 Virginia School Boards Association Business Honor Roll, and I now move to approve the following resolution. Whereas public schools and local businesses are an integral part of this community, and whereas many local businesses play a crucial role in supporting our schools, and whereas the economic health of our community, state, and nation depends on a strong public school system, and whereas collaboration between local public schools and local businesses strengthens schools and the business community alike by providing a well-trained and highly educated workforce, and whereas an excellent public school system is vital to the quality of life in this community and fundamental to preserving a strong democratic society now and in the future, and whereas Crop MedCaf employees have dedicated their time, energy, and resources in support of increasing student achievement and career awareness at Edison High School. Therefore, be it resolved that the Fairfax County School Board names Crop MedCaf to one of the 2017 Virginia School Boards Association Business Honor Roll, showing appreciation for the firm's ongoing support of this community's public schools. Your work has aided this community in focusing on the goal of providing the best public schools we can for every child who attends them.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mrs. Corbett Sanders. Ms. Darren Kofax, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, ma'am. I just want to thank Crop MedCaf for your very generous and long-term support of Edison Academy. Its community partners like Crop MedCaf that go the extra mile, not only to donate monetarily, but to contribute directly to the success of our individual students through -- by providing internships and by launching careers. We look forward to your continuing partnership, and we thank you so much for what you've done to date.
Mrs. Corbett Sanders, would you like to speak to your second?
Yes, I would like to echo Ms. Darren Kofax's remarks because it truly is a remarkable experience to go and observe the students taking the HVAC courses at Edison High School. They're enthusiastic, they are professional, and when they walk out the door at the end of their -- at graduation, they actually are workforce-ready. And we very much appreciate the care and attention that you offer to all of our students that take advantage of the HVAC courses at Edison. So, thank you very much, and you guys are a wonderful model for other businesses in our community.
And I would now like to invite the leaders and staff from Crop MedCaf up to the dais to join us for a picture.
I beg your pardon, everyone. We need to have you come back to the -- we need to come back and vote. I don't think this -- I don't think this will be a problem, but all those in favor of the resolution, raise your hand, and that is unanimous.
We crop that MedCaf.
Item 2.06, Virginia School Board Association Business Award, Capital One, and I call on Mrs. Strauss.
Thank you. With pleasure, I get to read this resolution thanking Capital One. Capital One has been a partnership leader in Fairfax County since consolidating headquarters operations in the county in 2000. Their support for Fairfax County public schools has impacted regions, individual schools, and individuals, especially and in every case, students. Highlights of their support include employee support for literacy, math, and science nights, Read Across America Day, field trips, and extensive mentoring and tutoring at Pine Springs Elementary School and Falls Church, culminating with the honor of receiving the FCPS 2003-2004 Partner of the Year. They helped lead the local effort to develop Finance Park with Junior Achievement and FCPS Instructional Services in 2006, first with a mobile park, and then in 2010, celebrating the opening of the Brick and Mortar Finance Park with a contract of support through 2020. They've been funding and staffing two extensive library redesigns, one with Glen Forest Elementary in 2008, and another at Mount Vernon Woods in 2012. Capital One has been collaborating with FCPS Activities and Athletics Partnerships Offices in several high schools in 2010 on a pilot program called Game Nights. Capital One was a founding donor to the Foundation for Fairfax County Public Schools in 2011. A senior executive served on the Foundation Board from 2013 to 2016. They developed marketing materials pro bono for the Foundation's startup phase, and they've been past sponsors of the annual FCPS Honors Award Ceremony. They provide a considerable amount of seed money to establish Opportunity Neighborhoods in the Mount Vernon area, which offers young people cradle-to-career pathways, summer internships, scholarships, and an imagination library. Capital One has been partnering with Bailey's Upper Elementary School for the Arts and Sciences to support Big Brothers, Big Sisters, new mentoring initiative, and have supported Read Across America Day there, too. They support the Genesee Works Workforce Development Partnership with Fairfax County Public Schools. They developed and are currently running the Capital One Middle School Coders Program, an eight-to-10-week after-school program where students learn to code, and upon successful completion, receive a laptop. The Capital One coders have supported students at Cooper, Glasgow, Jackson, Kilmer, Poe, Thoreau, and Holmes Middle School, as well as Cedar Lane School. A heartfelt thank you goes out to Capital One from this school board and on behalf of all the FCPS staff members you've supported and students that you've helped. Therefore, I'd like to read this resolution. Whereas public schools and local businesses are an integral part of this community, and whereas many local businesses play a crucial role in supporting our schools, and whereas the economic health of our community, state, and nation depends on a strong public school system, and whereas collaboration between local public schools and local businesses strengthens schools and the business community alike by providing a well-trained and highly educated workforce, and whereas an excellent public school system is vital to the quality of life in this community and fundamental to preserving a strong democratic society now and in the future, and whereas Capital One employees have dedicated their time, energy, and tangible resources in support of the district's strategic mission, increasing student awareness, achievement, and career readiness throughout Fairfax County public schools, supported the Foundation for Fairfax County Public Schools, county government, and not-for-profits aligned with FCPS. Therefore, be it resolved that the Fairfax County School Board names Capital One to the 2017 Virginia School Boards Association Business Honor Roll, showing appreciation for the firm's ongoing support of the community's public schools. Your work has aided this community in focusing on the goal of providing the best public schools we can for every child who attends them.
Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Palchek. Mrs. Strauss, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, Capital One has been a major community sponsor for 17 years. Every year, they have graciously added to the schools and the programs that they support, and on behalf of all of us, we are very grateful and thankful for all the work of Capital One. And as we have watched the new headquarters grow and the buildings get taller, I suspect they will continue to grow in their partnership and support for this community that is their home and for the children of many of their own employees. So, thank you very much, Capital One.
Ms. Palchek, would you like to speak to your second?
Yes, I just want to agree with Ms. Strauss. As one of our strong partners in Providence District and in the county, we are so grateful. I know students from Pine Spring to middle school and the high school have gotten to take advantage of this wonderful partnership, and we hope to continue years to come and really appreciate partners in the community who help support our schools in ways that we cannot. So, thank you.
And with that, I will call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand, and that is unanimous. The motion passes.
And if there are people here from Capital One tonight who we are honoring, if you will please come forward so that we can present you with your plaque and publicly thank you.
Now we turn to item 2.07, Resolution Honoring Laura Chu, and I call on Mr. McElveen for the resolution.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, tonight I will be reading the resolution honoring our student school board member Laura Chu. Whereas Laura Chu, a newly graduated member of the 2017 Senior Class at Thomas Jefferson High School for Science and Technology, has enthusiastically served as the 46th Student Representative to the Fairfax County School Board for the 2016-17 school year, and whereas Laura believes that helping all FCPS students reach the goal in Portrait of a Graduate is vital, has shown keen interest in her fellow students, advocated for their well-being and academic success, has proudly served as the student voice on the school board by reaching out to other students during visits to various high schools, and then sharing with the school board the student perspective on various issues, attended numerous board meetings, work sessions, and public hearings, and whereas she believes in community service and has set a strong example by her involvement with the Operation Communication as a mentor in Jill's House, which provides aid to children with physical and mental disabilities and their families, has been involved with the Jefferson Society, the McLean Youth Orchestra, has served as a Hugh O'Brien Youth Leadership Virginia Ambassador, and participated in the 10th Congressional District Young Women's Leadership Program, four-star leadership with General Tommy Franks, and encouraging empowerment through education, and served as the student representative for the school board's Advanced Academic Programs Advisory Committee, and whereas Laura maintained personal academic excellence while enrolled, sorry about that, while enrolled in rigorous advanced placement courses ranging from calculus and U.S. History to micro and macroeconomics, computer science, psychology, Chinese, and chemistry, was actively involved in student activities as the president of the Junior Class Council, a lead facilitator for kids or scientists, too, an arbitrator and the school's Model UN Secretariat, a member of the forensic speech and Rotary Interact Club, and found time and energy to participate in cross-country and indoor and outdoor track and field teams, and whereas she was appointed and eagerly served as one of the 18 representatives on the School Board Confidential Community Stakeholder Committee for the Superintendent Search in Spring 2017 for the express purpose of reviewing finalists for the position of Superintendent of Fairfax County Public Schools. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Fairfax County School Board acknowledges with gratitude the contributions and service of Laura Chu from July 1st, 2016 through June 30th, 2017, and extends its best wishes for her for continued success as she begins her post-secondary academic studies and in all of her future endeavors. I so move.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Moon. Mr. McElveen, would you like to speak to your motion?
I would be delighted to speak to my motion. And I would say that this was a very hard resolution for me to make because it means we're going to be losing someone who brightens up every room she enters and brings a positive attitude to everything she does. I've had the absolute pleasure of not only sitting next to Laura for the past year at board meetings, but also the honor of mentoring her since her sophomore year. Many of you may not know that Laura actually ran for the student representative position twice, becoming one of the top three finalists for the position as a sophomore. It's at that time that she caught my attention and earned my deep respect for being not only extremely well-spoken, but also for having the courage to express her convictions, even if they weren't always popular. She went on to earn the respect of her peers over the following year so that she easily won election as our 46th Student Representative. She's continued to be a voice of reason and maturity as our student representative. No matter how tense the situation or how negative the invective being hurled at her, Laura has always kept a positive attitude and has been a model of how to present herself as a board member. Laura has not only been a model for all of us, but she has also been a model for the next generation of student leaders who have never before seen someone like her serve in this position. She's the first Chinese-American and the first person of East Asian descent to serve as student representative since the position was created in 1972, a period of 45 years. Laura, at a very young age, is truly a blazer of trails and a breaker of glass ceilings. Having attended meetings alongside her in the Chinese community, I've seen firsthand how her younger students look up to her as a role model and how she inspires them to serve their community. Laura's parents, Min and Fu Ming, should be so proud of their daughter, and we are so grateful to them for sharing her with us over the past year. Like all of us, Laura has enjoyed sitting in many meetings well past midnight, so much so that her excitement has often carried over into her trips home from those meetings. On one occasion, her car broke down. On another, she was showered in gasoline after a gas pump mishap, thus smelling up the halls of TJ for many days afterwards. So, Laura has experienced all the battle scars that come along with school board membership. We wish Laura all the best as she goes off to the Wharton School at the University of Pennsylvania this fall. Although she hopes to go into business, there are certainly Wharton graduates who eventually choose to give up their business career to pursue politics. Our society would be all the better if she chooses to do so. Laura, thank you for all you have done for our students and our school system. If nothing else, you have taught us an important lesson: We should never accept a car ride from you. On behalf of the board, I want to present you with something that every college dorm room needs, a photo collage of your favorite school board members.
All right, Mr. Moon, would you like to try to tap that with your?
There is no way, there is no way. I want to echo everything that Mr. Ryan McElveen has already said about Laura. I'm going to truly miss you. It's not just, you know, students in Chinese-American community, but you've been a role model for all students in Fairfax County. I mean, you've been, you've been very succinct in what you want to say, but at the same time, you've been very thoughtful and very insightful with the feedbacks provided to the work of this board, and I want to thank you for that. You know, watching you over the last one-year period, as a someone who only has two sons in the family, I have been thinking, wow, I wish I could have a daughter like Laura. It's been so delightful to watch you participate, you know, along with us. With that, again, we may, I may be watching a few football games and basketball games and not necessarily always rooting for your team, but wish you well at UPenn.
Ms. Heinz.
Yeah, thank you. Laura, you know, if you all heard that resume, right? It's like every time we describe one of our student representatives, and Laura, you are no exception, I feel like we're actually describing a team of 15 students, right, who have somehow developed a clever hologram, right? And actually, but you are one person, you're one student, and it's amazing what you've already accomplished in your life, and in that way, I think you're a role model for all of us. I would describe you as, describe you as someone with courage and poise, always, that you always give everything, thoughtful analysis, and very mature. I think Mr. McElveen said that. So, I can't, I echo everything that's been said and just let you know that we will cheer you on. We want to hear from you as you go out there and continue to make us proud and make us look good.
Ms. Palchek.
Laura, I still remember the day I met you at TJ when I came to speak. It was a small group, and you came out and definitely stood out. I was so impressed. I wish I could have gotten to see you more, but every time you spoke in here, and I think Ms. Heinz mentioned, my words, my thoughts of you are brave. You are not only well-spoken, but every time we've tackled a difficult issue, you have taken it on in a manner that shows that you're not fearful of difficult tasks and of seeing things from different perspectives and of trying to gather the information of what do our students feel. I feel like I wish we could have more students representing us, but you've done such a marvelous job of going out and meeting with high schoolers and trying to compress some of, all of the different thoughts that are out there and share them with us. And so, I think you've done a marvelous job of representing your 188,000 colleagues in FCPS, and we wish you all the best, and I hope to see you back soon. Every time you come home, please come and see us here. Thank you.
Mrs. Strauss.
Laura, congratulations, and we will miss you. Your leadership skills are commendable, but what I think is most interesting is that you are thoughtful, you are gracious, you are patient, and you are courageous in what you need to say. And because you are so well-spoken and so even in your presentation, that the words that you speak are so meaningful. Sometimes when we've had very difficult meetings, and there have been very contentious things said, you have found your courage to speak on behalf of our students that you represent. And you have not, you have graciously sort of taken in all the sides of whatever has come forward, but then you then have spoken on behalf of our own students of what you think is in their heart. That takes great courage, but tremendous poise, and that is a sign of leadership because we listen. And I sure hope that people who are watching us on TV listen and take to heart what you have to say. You're an excellent representative. We'll miss you, good luck, and as Ms. Heinz said, you are certainly at least 15 students or maybe 20 or 50 or 100 or 188,000 because they are all lined up right behind you for us to listen to carefully. Thank you, Laura.
Mrs. Corbett Sanders.
So, I remember when I first met you, neither one of us was on the board, and there was this charming and insightful young woman who came to the Advanced Academic Programs Advisory Committee, and I was so pleased because of your quiet leadership and very insightful comments when they needed to bring people together to focus on what was the most important. And as you joined the board, I was so thrilled because of that quiet leadership, Laura. And it's, it's something that we talk about, the role of people on this board to be good models for our students and our community, and you certainly have lived up to that challenge. You are a wonderful model for all of our students, but also for all of us on this board in how you approach your work and how you approach your life. So, thank you, we cheer you on, and you know that you are always welcome to come home to Fairfax. We need people like you to go off and explore, but come back home.
Ms. Darrenak Kofax.
Laura, I want to thank you for your leadership and your hard work as part of our board. Every time I would even whispered Ryan, she's so impressive in her ability to articulate her thoughts with, with, as my colleague said, with patience, measured, and sometimes it has been a difficult situation where you've been. So, your wisdom and your ability to do that is wise beyond your years. You don't realize even, I think, sometimes what an amazing skill set you have, but it has been wonderful watching you be a part of this, this, this group of ours, and I just thank you. It's, it's been a pleasure to get to know you, and I thank you for all that you've done. You are an amazing role model for all of our students, and I can't wait to see all of the amazing things you're going to do at UPenn, so please stay in touch and keep, and keep us surprised if your success is there.
Ms. McLaughlin.
So, I won't repeat all the amazing but well-deserved words of praise you've heard from my colleagues, so I will leave you this as I get the bragging rights that Laura's going to my alma mater, the University of Pennsylvania, Mr. Moon, and where I hope you will eat many cheese steaks at Abner's. I hope that you will become a Philadelphia Eagles fan, and that you will learn the Penn Fight Song, and most importantly, you will thrive and enjoy four tremendous and amazing years of learning because you've worked hard, and you have certainly distinguished yourself as being one of the very best we could produce here in Fairfax County schools. We thank you for your service and are very, very excited to hear about how your next journey begins up in Philadelphia, so best wishes and go Quakers.
I'll just say that Laura, you've been a very effective advocate for the 188,000 students in Fairfax County, and your outreach has been excellent, your advocacy, your ability to analyze an issue and talk about it thoughtfully, weighing both sides of it, you've, you've been excellent at doing that. I think you have helped lead the ongoing effort for student mental health, which has been so important. You've helped the Student Advisory Committee on that effort, which has been ongoing, and I, I know they valued your input there. You're definitely a rising star. I think probably you were a rising star before you, you got here, but you continue just to go higher and higher. You're a talented young woman, very dedicated and well-rounded, and, and just plain nice. So, you know, we can use all of that we can get. So, we have learned from you. I hope you've learned something from us. I take note that the TJ renovation was completed just as you're leaving, right? And so, here you go, you go off to your next adventure, but there, it's the end of one year and the beginning of another, so congratulations, and do come back, we, we do want to hear from you. You've, you've been marvelous, and, and we will definitely miss you. And with that, I am going, I think there's no, I call for the vote. All those in favor? And that is clearly unanimous. Congratulations, Laura. And if your family and friends would come to the front?
Laura will have a few words to say during Student Representative Matters, so we will now move on to item 2.08, Resolution Honoring Dr. Jane Lipp, and I call on Ms. McLaughlin for a resolution.
It is my distinct pleasure to share this resolution honoring Dr. Jane Lipp. Whereas Dr. Jane Lipp has worked for Fairfax County Public Schools for 31 years in different roles, including Special Education Teacher at Edison High School, Special Education Coordinator at Bell Willard, and Special Education Program Manager at the Area 1 Administrative Office, Sub-School Principal and Director for Student Services at Hayfield Secondary, Associate Principal and Principal at South County Secondary School, Principal at South County High School, and Assistant Superintendent of the Department of Special Services. And whereas she has consistently demonstrated a sincere commitment to all students of Fairfax County Public Schools to be treated fairly and equally in order to thrive in a vibrant, healthful, safe, enriching, and respectful environment. And whereas she has been a passionate advocate for students, families, teachers, and staff by generously giving of herself and participating in any and all activities, celebrating the talents and efforts of students and fellow educators. And whereas she has given countless hours of her time to develop and mentor other leaders in Fairfax County Public Schools, and whereas she has worked with determinate- And whereas she has worked with determination and tireless collaboration with school board members, principals, administrators, and teachers, staff, families, and students to ensure and maximize the strength and success of students in the Fairfax County Public Schools. Now therefore be it resolved that the Fairfax County School Board extends its deepest appreciation to Dr. Jane Lipp for her outstanding service and dedication to Fairfax County Public Schools and to our students and to community members. But we also congratulate and wish her well on her retirement and her new journey. I so move.
Second. There's second. Second in by Mrs. Schultz. Ms. McLaughlin, do you have a, want to speak to your motion?
Yes, thank you. Jane, there are simply no words that can fully capture your remarkable leadership. It's without question that your emotional quotient, otherwise known as your EQ, is simply off the charts. But beyond the fact that you are a remarkable leader, one of your other greatest qualities is humility. Your willingness to truly engage with our community, with any stakeholders who've come to you, your willingness to listen and to embrace the new information they want to impart and share, the empathy that you extend, and I've been so blessed to watch and learn from you, your willingness to problem solve and really take each and every situation and look for the finest resolution that honors our students and families. It's just purely been a joy. And I want the community to know that what's not captured in the resolution is that Jane has been a remarkable champion of student mental health and well-being. She was instrumental in bringing those 21st century lifelong critical skills of executive functioning, as well as social emotional learning, to our students. She's also been instrumental in our decoding dyslexia advocacy work. She also was instrumental in bringing Dr. Mark Brackett from the Yale Center for Emotional Intelligence into our schools and really transforming what happens for our students. And finally, it's been a pleasure to serve with you on the Joint County Task Force, the Successful Children Youth Policy Team. You just continue to incredibly improve each and every room, each and every meeting, and each and every task that you take on. And I certainly have benefited from being able to work with you and am just inspired by you. It's been a blessing to be with you, Jane.
Ms. Schultz, would you like to speak to your second?
So I've been on the board for six years, and we've seen educators and leaders and students and superintendents come and go. And on a few occasions, there's a departure that I'm not quite sure how we're going to be the same system again. How the magnitude of what somebody has done can ever exactly be replaced. And you know I'm a student of history, and I love it. And I have a quote for you, Dr. Lipp, from President John Quincy Adams, who has nothing to do with education, but if your actions inspire others to dream more, learn more, do more, and become more, you are a leader. And in every sense of the word, that fits you, because often our students who, and their families, who struggle to dream more, to do more, to learn more, and to become more, their path was made better by your presence, whether it was in a school, in a classroom, or leading part of this organization that is very complex. And you will dearly be missed.
Mrs. Strauss?
Dr. Lipp, Jane, we share the same name, and we come from the same state. You have an unusual talent. You are a soul saver, you're a healer, you're a comforter. And in the education business, that's the business that we're in, but there are very few educators who come along that have that extra gift. And you have it. You enter the room, and we all feel it. You are able to calm the waters, you give all of us advice, and we listen carefully, and we believe you, because somehow in your heart, you know what's right for a child or a family. And it has been your job to help some of our neediest children and our most overwrought parents, because they are trying to parent very needy children. But there is always something so comforting and real in your advice, and to soothe children and parents. We will miss you. There aren't many people who come along that have that gift, Jane. And I know that you will go on in your next chapter, and somebody is going to get you to come forward to help them again. You're not really going to retire by that lake. I can see that. They will find you, and if they don't, I will let the people in Wisconsin know where you are. Because there are many more children and families who need the kind of understanding, support, and love that you have to give. We have learned so much from you. We will miss you terribly, but you are a singleton person. Not many like you in life. Thank you. Thank you for years of service to us and our children and our families. We love you.
Mrs. Corbett Sanders?
So Jane, I know you come from Wisconsin, but you know you are now a daughter of Mount Vernon. You're a daughter of Mount Vernon because your years of service and the way that you have embraced each one of our children, you know, from Edison to Hayfield, to being part of that original team at South County that created an oasis in an old farm field that wasn't there. And for that, we are forever grateful in Mount Vernon. And as someone who first met you at, while we were both on the Advanced Academic Programs Advisory Committee, and then where you invited us in to come see what you were doing at South County, because we were trying to get that spirit going at West Potomac, and you invited a bunch of parent leaders and staff to see what you were doing to build the stallion nation. And it's something that I believe contributed to the development of the world's greatest high school at West Potomac. So thank you for that. And most importantly, thank you for your kind heart and wisdom that you not only shared with our students and our parents, but for those of us on this board. You will all, you have left an indelible mark on Fairfax County Public Schools, our students, and in Mount Vernon. So thank you.
Ms. Chu?
Hi, Dr. Lipp. So little-known thing was when I was first elected as student representative, our previous student representative, Ben, actually sent me a list of people you have to meet, and you were the first one on the list. So of course I had to meet you, and I'm so lucky to have been able to this year. We sat through meetings together, and every single time I look you in the eye, it's like we have a conversation, just telepathically. Because I know what you're thinking, you always put students first. And it's so amazing to see a friendly, a smiling, a bubbly personality everywhere I go. I loved spending time with you throughout the year, and I'm going to miss seeing you so much. But it's been a wonderful ride, learning from you and seeing you and hearing all your comments throughout meetings. So it looks like we're leaving together, but I just want to say thank you for a wonderful year and being one of the first and best people I've met here.
Ms. Palchek?
I won't cry. Jane, I feel like you are the mom of FCPS. I feel like we're about to be orphaned. You have a very lucky Mr. Jane sitting here, in the second row, glowing in pride, and he should be. I feel like I only got a year and a half with you, a year and a half too short, but it's hard to imagine this job without you here. You definitely help us slow down and think through things and feel and understand where we're headed. And a job that fuels, and a system that feels very busy and always running. And I think if only every one of our students had a chance to meet you personally, they'd understand what an impact you've had on them and on our school system. Just so you know, I spoke to Officer Allen earlier. You're not really leaving. We're making sure it doesn't happen. We've got a plan. Got a tent outside for you. But seriously, I hope you're not, I hope you'll remain in our hearts and as our friend. You'll send us some delicious cheese from Wisconsin. We really, I can't, you've left some big shoes. I won't talk about the size of them. But we, I will leave it there. Thank you so much. The school system really owes so much to your leadership and your kindness, and I hope it remains for years to come. Thank you, and enjoy your time.
Ms. Moon?
Dr. Lipp, you're a consummate professional in what you do. While focused on the issues on hand, you are always sincerely listening to other people's concerns in your display of sympathy and empathy, always smiling. Now I may sometimes go into a meeting with you, maybe some angst, some anxiety, to a certain extent of maybe even anger, resentment. You know how to calm me down. I thought I was a patient person, but you are so much more patient than I am. I've learned so much from you, and thank you. When you go up to Wisconsin to a lot of fishing on the lake, or when you catch some good fish, I like sushi and sashimi, so send me some good fish. Thank you.
Mr. McAlveen?
So Jane, I first met you when you were principal at South County, and I remember walking into that school, and it was remarkable how beloved you were and how much you loved them back in return. It was palpable. And that only continued into your role as Assistant Superintendent, where you loved everyone back just as much as they loved you. You know, during your tenure, you have had to deal with some of the most sensitive, difficult, and contentious issues of our time, and many people don't know how much work you have to put in behind the scenes on those. But you always put students first, as we've heard tonight. You always took on every challenge with a smile and that tireless positive attitude. And as everyone has said, we will miss you, but we know where to find you. So Godspeed.
Ms. Heinz?
Yeah, I'm a little surprised by all this talk of Wisconsin. I must have missed a meeting. Because you know that usually the deal is, when you leave us, you don't go far, so that we can call you back and call you back and call you back and help us. It's going to be hard for you to work remotely from Wisconsin, I'm just saying. But I, you know, I can't say much more than has already been said, except I think that the Department of Special Services, as you know, and as anyone who knows the system knows, covers a wide range of some of the toughest and definitely most important work that we do. And as Jane's shop, it was always a pleasant, positive place with a smile and confidence that, you know, I always knew that nothing was too hard to be solved. Anything that was good for kids was always possible. So I believe that just from being here and being you and doing your job as well as you have, you've left a wiser and empowered FCPS behind you, and we will be able to continue the work that you've done. So thank you.
Ms. Darnett Kopeck?
Dr. Lipp, Jane, what a pleasure it has been to work with you during my time on the board. Whenever I needed a balance point, I guess I'll call it that, as to what would happen if we did this, or what do you think, how would that work if we implemented that, I was well advised in my early tenure on the board, ask Dr. Lipp. And it wasn't too much longer after that when I knew to go to you directly when I was troubled with something or when I needed advice in decision-making. So your advice and wisdom were always on point. Your demeanor was calming and your smile always reassuring, just as it is right now. So I thank you for all that you've done for the school system, for the children, and for your work on advising this board in difficult decisions. You have been such a professional, and we truly, truly will have a void without you here. But your retirement is well deserved, and I wish you all the very, very best on your life's next adventure. But come back and visit.
Well, before I let Dr. Lockhart have the last word, I'm going to, in part, echo what my colleagues have said, but it's hard to say these things enough for somebody with your talent and the impact that you've had on the school system, Dr. Lipp. One of the things that always impressed me about you was, it didn't matter how tangled a situation was, you just went right in and started untangling it and figured out how are we going to find the best resolution to this issue. And to say that you're upbeat and positive is certainly an understatement. I don't think I ever talked with you when you told me something couldn't be done or couldn't be fixed, or we couldn't handle this somehow, whatever the situation was. So you have had a huge impact on the students of Fairfax County, and particularly our most vulnerable students are. So I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart and say how much we are going to really, truly miss you, Dr. Lipp. So I know we all feel that way, and there'll be a great big space there where you are always welcome back. So with that, I will ask Dr. Lockhart to say a few words before we vote. Mrs. Strauss is going to remind me. She's going to pat me on the hand to vote.
We absolutely have to vote. Thank you, Madam Chair. I certainly echo everything else that the board members have said. Dr. Lipp, I just want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart. I know I certainly share the sentiments of our leadership team and our staff at large for thanking you for the work you've done. Mrs. Schultz, I also have a quote that I'd like to share, except I don't know who said this. But I'm going to say it anyway, and it's very true in education circles, and it's very applicable to you, Dr. Lipp. The quote is, "No one really cares how much you know until they know how much you care." And I don't think it takes anyone more than a couple of seconds, if you've never met Dr. Lipp, to figure out how much she truly cares. She cares about FCPS. She cares about every single student in this system, and I think she's lived by that mantra. She's managed with her mind, but led with her heart, a great example for all of us. And she certainly keeps students, has kept students, at the center of every decision and thing that she's done here in FCPS. I've learned personally a tremendous amount from you and have benefited from your leadership, and for that I'm grateful and appreciative. And I certainly know that FCPS is a better place for you having served here. So thank you, Dr. Lipp.
And with that, I will call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand, and that is unanimous. Dr. Lipp, would you please come down and join us for a photograph?
Dr. Lipp, would you please come down and join us for a photograph?
So if you wouldn't mind coming in tight. So if I could have everyone angle your bodies so we could squish a little tighter. Thank you. We have a little room on both ends. Come on in. Okay? Okay. This is perfect. We're going to take three.
I think we need ten for me.
I think I need a taller ladder. Okay, looking right here. This is great. Everyone stretch, nice big smile. One more time. Thank you so much.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Isn't it nice? Yeah, it's really nice. Hey, Ellie.
And Dr. Lipp, we are honored to give you the floor.
Thank you very much. Good evening, distinguished school board members, interim Superintendent Lockard, leadership team members, central and school staff, students, and members of our Fairfax community. I want to thank you for hiring me and giving me the privilege and memorable experience of being an educator in Fairfax County Public Schools. During my tenure, I've had the honor of working with outstanding students, esteemed staff, and exceptional families across eight positions over the course of 31 extraordinary years. FCPS has been my second family and provided me with a welcoming and secure home away from home. Let me first take a moment to thank my wonderful husband, John, who's been my partner and confidant for 39 years. I was only 15 when we met. Throughout my various roles and responsibilities, John has always been there to encourage and support me in my professional endeavors. At South County High School, they used to call him First Dude. He's made me laugh each and every day and never allowed me to take myself too seriously. Thank you, dear John. To our school board, to our school board, thank you for tirelessly working to offer an extensive continuum of programs and services to meet the needs of our diverse district. I will forever be grateful to you that you embrace the concept of providing relevant and meaningful education for all students. And as I have said on many occasions, in this school system, our school system, all means all. You have focused on meeting academic, social-emotional, and transitional needs of our young people, and you have also brought to the forefront the needs of our staff. Thank you for your outreach and work with families and the greater community as you have encouraged them to invest in their children, thereby enabling us to provide them with quality life and learning experiences. To parents and families, thank you for sending us your very best and for trusting and collaborating with us on their behalf. You are necessary and true partners in providing our youth with exceptional education. To our school and central staffs, thank you for caring about, encouraging, and supporting our students, colleagues, and families, as you have shared your knowledge and extensive expertise with all of us. Your passion for and dedication to the profession is admired and respected. And to our DSS family, thank you for investing in and being active participants on our exceptional team. I am eternally grateful for your willingness to embrace and address challenges as we have identified and implemented creative ideas and solutions to meet the needs of our schools. To our students, thank you for daily demonstrating what it means to be a good student and citizen while showing compassion for and supporting your peers. It is with pride and pleasure that I have observed you demonstrating your leadership skills as you have embraced our mental health and wellness initiatives and focus, and you have worked on other educational district initiatives. You have planned, hosted, and supported numerous successful events and activities in your school communities. Through your daily work and actions, I am reminded that our future is truly in good hands. Thank you also to the wise mentors I have worked with throughout my Fairfax journey. There have been so many professional, exceptional professionals who have offered sage advice and supported my work and initiatives as I further developed as an individual and educator. Whether it was my participation in Lead Fairfax, shadowing strong leaders, or consulting frequently with colleagues, I was able to hone my craft and continue to strengthen and expand and strengthen my repertoire of skills. And as one of my closest mentors once said, "May you and your colleagues discover and remember that your greatest resource lies within each other." During the last several weeks, I have reflected on and been reminded about the life lesson of change. There are exciting times ahead as Dr. Scott Brabrant takes the reins as your new superintendent and Teresa Johnson becomes your Assistant Superintendent for Special Services. You are in great hands, and they will collaborate with you well. We do recognize and know that challenges remain as we grapple with a larger and more diverse student population. School funding and resources remain tight. However, I am confident that you will continue to put students first and stay dedicated to the cause of meeting the needs of all students, staff, and families. Please continue to have high expectations and support all students as they strive to acquire the attributes of a portrait of a graduate. Remain committed to implementing Ignite, our strategic plan that identifies and addresses the various needs of our students, staff, and school communities. Stay steadfast as being the eternal optimist who believes in our youth and the great promise and opportunity of education. Continue to be ambassadors and cheerleaders for our district. As I say often, in life, we can never have too many cheerleaders. Thank you for continuing to advocate for our constituents. As John and I approach July, our native state of Wisconsin is calling us home, and we look forward to the tall evergreen trees, serene loons on the beautiful lake, and gorgeous sunsets in the north woods. We will be spending more time with family, attending Badger and Packer games, and eating more cheese and ice cream to support our beloved dairy state. In closing, I reflect on my gratitude for the wonderful years and memories of Fairfax County, and my thoughts are captured in the words of one of my favorite characters, Winnie the Pooh. How lucky I am to have something that makes saying goodbye so hard. You may have gone from my sight, but never from my heart. Again, thank you, my educational heroes and champions. Thank you.
Item 2.09, Resolution Supporting Continued Federal Funding for National Endowments for the Humanities and Arts. I call on Mr. McElveen for the resolution.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will be reading the resolution supporting continued federal funding for the National Endowments for the Humanities and the Arts and associated summer education programs for schoolteachers. Whereas the National Endowment for the Humanities and the National Endowment for the Arts are independent federal agencies created in 1965 and are dedicated to strengthening teaching, learning, and the arts in our nation's schools and communities. And whereas the NEH is one of the largest funders of humanities programs in the United States and a major funder of summer education programs utilized by Fairfax County elementary and secondary educators. And whereas NEH summer education programs, including teacher institutes and seminars, have enabled Fairfax County history and social studies teachers to participate in summer professional development programs that benefit their students. And NEH summer education programs allow FCPS teachers to earn professional development points towards recertification as required by the Commonwealth of Virginia. And whereas the NEA recommends more than 2,400 grants for every congressional district in the country, a significant percentage of which go to those who have fewer opportunities to participate in the arts, including high-poverty neighborhoods and underserved populations such as people with disabilities and veterans. And whereas Congress has demonstrated bipartisan support for both the NEA and NEH in recent years, taking modest steps to increase their funding. And whereas the budget request for FY 2018 sent to Congress by the administration proposes to eliminate the NEA, NEH, and the summer professional development programs for K-12 educators they support, thus removing a significant source of grant-funded professional development and teacher recertification programs for FCPS teachers. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Fairfax County School Board supports the NEA, the NEH, and associated summer education programs for K-12 teachers, and calls upon members of Fairfax County's congressional delegation to support at least level funding and Congress's annual appropriation for these organizations in FY 2018. I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Strauss. Mr. McElveen, would you like to speak to your motion?
I will make this brief, as we have had quite a few recognitions tonight, but this is an issue that was brought to me by educators in our community that have participated in these programs, and they are passionate about FCPS educators continuing to have opportunities to participate. And that, beyond that, the NEA and the NEH are such intrinsic institutions in our society, and it's important that this board stand up for them when they're most needed.
Mrs. Strauss?
Yes, both of these organizations, NEH and NEA, are critical community supporters. Very often, teachers and communities are able to write grants and ask for often not huge amounts of money, but enough to create unusual opportunities for children that would simply not be present if these organizations were eliminated. They are important for all students that have opportunities in the arts. It's important for the humanities. These are just part of the quality of life that all children in all communities need to have in order to be not just well-educated, but to bring the joy and the passion in their lives. So I absolutely hope that NEA and NEH will survive and at least receive level funding. It is very, very meaningful in a lot of communities, and particularly communities that have no other resources, and our teachers who very much enjoy the opportunities for further development and grants that are so meaningful in their classrooms. So thank you, Mr. McElveen, for bringing this forward.
Ms. Heinz?
Yeah, I do want to thank Mr. McElveen very much for bringing this forward. As a classroom teacher in Fairfax County over the years, I picked up a lot of training, one way or another, sometimes, you know, specifically, but sometimes because other teachers had had training and they brought it into the teams and into the classroom. And I taught general education in the classroom, and those little pieces of the arts that you bring into the classroom are so meaningful to the students. And when we talk about, you know, creativity and communication and critical thinking, that's all about the arts, and we need those things in the classroom. And I've used everything I've learned over the years. So, you know, we joke sometimes that we don't get very much from the federal government at budget time, right? But the few things that we do get are so critical, and this is one of them, and I think it's very important that we, as a board, speak out. Thank you.
Ms. McLaughlin?
I just want to thank Mr. McElveen again for bringing this to the board. Without question, these are two extremely important national agencies, and I think they deeply affect important aspects of education in our society. And the importance of this board being the 10th-largest school system in the country to stand up in a united voice and express to our elected officials at the federal level how important and how much we believe in these programs is what makes this resolution so important. So thank you, Mr. McElveen, and thank you to the educators who brought it to Mr. McElveen's attention. It is the community's engagement and bringing information to this board that allows us to be able to do our very best work. So it matters.
Ms. Darnick, oh, I'm sorry. Ms., oh, Ms. Darnick-Hopekx?
Yes, I just wanted again to echo my colleague's sentiments to thank Mr. McElveen. As someone who believes that the arts are extremely important to all of our students, particularly those who may not have the financial means to go to some of the things that other children have opportunities for, these grants to our schools are vastly important, and it's important that we, as a board, recognize it and that we support that, and we call upon, as the resolution says, members of our congressional delegation to support at least level funding for these programs next year. So thank you, Ryan, for bringing this forward.
Ms. Schultz?
Well, if nothing else, I'm consistent. So I don't understand why we're offering this resolution. This is the federal budget. I'd much rather spend time talking about the signs that are in the audience and the position that we placed some of our teachers in, I think, potentially with unintended consequences of our budget vote. So I'd rather spend the time of this board talking about the $2.8 billion that's in our county and how it affects our employees. And I also say this as the mother of an artist. There are many studies that show that federal funding and support of arts in this fashion has actually suppressed the earnings of artists, has suppressed opportunities for artists, and that you are subsidizing something that if it were allowed into the free market, you would actually increase both the opportunities for artists, opportunities for more learning, and certainly the pocketbooks of artists. So this is another case of, I think, our board getting way out of its lane. I'm not going to support resolutions to amendments to the U.S. Constitution or anything of the like. Why we continue to get out of our lane and instead of focusing on the 1.1 million residents in Fairfax County who need the dedication of our time and our resources here, the earlier resolutions this evening were to honor people who have served and who have achieved and obtained and contributed to Fairfax County Public Schools. This is off the rails.
Ms. Corbett-Sanders?
Thank you. I too will echo what I've said in the past, which is that here in Fairfax County, we're actually dependent on three funding bodies. The three funding bodies are the local, the state, and the federal. And our funding comes in two forms, essentially, direct funding and indirect funding. And part of the indirect funding is the funding that is provided to our schools and to our students through grants, through opportunities by participating at events at the Kennedy Center for the Performing Arts, which does get funding from the National Endowment for the Arts, as well as opportunities in other venues around the D.C. metro area, because we are blessed here in Fairfax County by the proximity that we have to Washington, D.C. So I will be supporting this resolution because I believe that we, as educators, have to educate the whole child, and that includes educating in the area of the arts. And our community expects this. in Fairfax County who need the dedication of our time and our resources here. The earlier resolutions this evening were to honor people who have served and who have achieved and obtained and contributed to Fairfax County Public Schools. This is off the rails.
Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Thank you. I, too, will echo what I've said in the past, which is that here in Fairfax County, we're actually dependent on three funding bodies. The three funding bodies are the local, the state, and the federal. And our funding comes in two forms, essentially: direct funding and indirect funding. And part of the indirect funding is the funding that is provided to our schools and to our students through grants, through opportunities by participating at events at the Kennedy Center for the Performing Arts, which does get funding from the National Endowment for the Arts, as well as opportunities in other venues around the D.C. metro area. Because we are blessed here in Fairfax County by the proximity that we have to Washington, D.C. So, I will be supporting this resolution because I believe that we, as educators, have to educate the whole child, and that includes educating in the area of the arts. And our community expects this from us, because if they didn't, we would not have seen the very large representation from our community as we talked about funding for our music programs in elementary schools. So, thank you. Thank you, Mr. McElveen, for bringing this to us.
I have one go back. Ms. McLaughlin?
Just briefly, one of the beauties of a democracy and free speech is that we all get a chance to share our diverse perspectives. And I respect each one of my colleagues for the diverse perspectives that we bring to our work. So, I do want to clarify, however, that, as Ms. Schultz talked about what matters to this board, I don't want to confuse anyone in the audience or who's watching this evening. I think this board cares deeply about every advocate sitting in this room. I think we care about the issues that the advocates are here tonight. Spending five minutes talking about a resolution that helps allow our congressmen and our senators to understand what matters, again, being the 10th-largest school system in the country, if we don't speak up, who will? And so, I do hope for the audience, especially tonight, you don't misconstrue that this resolution means we don't care any less about the important things that you are here tonight to make sure that we see and understand and recognize and spend time on.
Seeing no other lights, I will call for the vote on the resolution supporting continued federal funding for National Endowments for the Humanities and the Arts. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Heinz Palczek, Corbett Sanders, Strauss Evans, Moon, McElveen, I'm sorry, McLaughlin, Darnett Kofax, McElveen, all those opposed, all those abstaining, Schultz, and that motion passes.
Mr. Wilson?
With Mr. Wilson away from the table. We now turn to item 3.01, citizen participation. Tonight, 10 citizens have signed up to address the board, and we have two video testimonies as well. Speakers are requested to limit their remarks to not more than three minutes. The school board will not hear statements involving issues that have been scheduled for public hearings, such as capital improvement program, budget, and boundaries. Complaints regarding individual students or school-based employees should be directed to the appropriate school principal or other school official. Speakers should refrain from using personally identifiable information in connection with an individual student. Speakers are expected to deliver their comments with the decorum and respect appropriate to the conduct of the public's business. Please be mindful that there are often young children in attendance at these meetings or watching at home, so language should be appropriate for all age levels. Thank you for your cooperation, and thanks to those who have come out to speak to us tonight. Our first speaker is Ariana Habibi.
Hello, my name is Ariana Habibi, and I would like to yield my time to John Cullather.
Good evening. My name is John Cullather. I live a few blocks from Jeb Stewart High School and have lived in the Mason District for over 25 years. Appointments to school board advisory committees are an important part of citizen engagements and outreach, as the school board establishes its priorities, taking community input into consideration. And as you have seen with the ad hoc committee advising you on the Jeb Stewart High School renaming, committees do not always achieve consensus. My background is I worked for the U.S. House of Representatives for over 33 years, including the last 15 years as the staff director of the subcommittee that oversees and wrote all of the U.S. Coast Guard and maritime policy for the United States. I've been on the winning side of policy debates, and I've been on the losing side of policy Last week, we had a horrendous act of violence in Alexandria, when James Hodgkinson shot at members of Congress, wounding a congressman, a law enforcement officer, and a former congressional staffer. While law enforcement personnel are investigating this, according to statements in the press and social media, it's very clear that Mr. Hodgkinson had severe disagreements with President Trump and the Republican-controlled Congress. In a similar way, Jeb Stewart disagreed with our nation's first Republican president, President Lincoln, and the Congress who was supporting him. He, too, chose to use violence to achieve his policy objectives. This isn't presentism or revisionism. Using violence to resolve policy disputes has never been acceptable in the United States since the U.S. Constitution was ratified and took effect in 1789. Now, last week, Denise Patton Pace stated she believed that the cause of the Civil War were higher tariffs and other economic policies adversely affecting southern states. Ken Longmire stated that he believes that it was because of policies regarding slavery. What they both agree on, it was about policy differences. And whatever the policy differences were, there is no justification for Jeb Stewart and his associates to take up arms against our Constitution that established a peaceful process for resolution of differences between the states. He chose to take up arms against our constitutional democracy in a war in which over 350,000 members of our U.S. military were killed. As policy members on a democratically-elected board, do you think it is ever justifiable for someone to use violence if they disagree with your policies? People around the country are watching this board in Fairfax County to see what you choose to do, and whether you want to remove the honor that was granted to Jeb Stewart, even though he took up...
Could you finish up in a sentence or two? Thank you.
Yeah. Even though he chose to use violence to attempt to achieve his policy objectives. We wouldn't name a school after James Hodgkinson. We shouldn't name one after Jeb Stewart. Thank you.
Kayden Ortiz. Is Kayden Ortiz here?
Hello, my name is Kayden Ortiz, and I am a former Robinson Ram. Throughout my middle school and high school years, I struggled with my gender identity and sexuality. Unfortunately, I had to learn what being transgender meant through an inaccurate representation on a teen TV show. This led to unclear information causing harm to my mental psyche. We cannot entirely control the way that the trans community is represented in the media. However, what we can do is provide useful and correct information about what it means to be trans. Being misinformed about that meaning can cause mental harm and physical harm to trans students. Recently, a transgender girl at a school in Fairfax County was attacked by one of her peers because of that kind of misinformation. For many students, it could mean being attacked, or it could mean detrimental self-harm and/or suicide. I know that if I had been properly introduced to what it means to be transgender in middle school, I would have not have attempted suicide myself nor experienced bullying from my peers. I believe that Fairfax County wants to protect all students, as referenced by the Students' Rights and Responsibilities Handbook, regardless of their race, color, religion, national origin, gender, disability, sexual orientation, gender identification, genetic information, or any other characteristics protected by federal and/or state law. I ask that you please take into account this information when making the significant decision. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Robert Rigby. Robert Rigby?
Good evening, Board Member, Superintendent Lockard, and staff. My name is Robert Rigby. I am the current president of FCPs Pride. We are a certified employees group for LGBTQ and allied staff. We have been joined by LGBTQ parents and parents of LGBTQ students. I stand again today to thank you for continuing to include LGBTQ students in family life education. We are beginning to hear positive statements from students about hearing the word "sexual orientation," "gender identity," "gay," "lesbian," "bisexual," and "transgender" used in their health classes. Please do not change that. I'm sure you heard that last night the Prince William School Board joined you in including "sexual orientation" and "gender identity" in its non-discrimination policy. One of the school systems mentioned as having no negative incidents in the amazing research done by school board member Justin Wilk was Fairfax County Public Schools. Of this, I was very proud. Mr. Wilk, in that PowerPoint, said 3.6 million children are covered by such policies with zero negative incidents. He noted that most of the systems he researched also had detailed regulations, such as the ones passed by our neighbors in Frederick, Maryland, last week, and such as the ones put on hold by our own system last summer. None of those systems had negative incidents either. I told you in March that I, as a teacher, a club sponsor, as an employee, was experiencing a rising sense of panic about the results to our students of not having this implementation. That sense of panic has not abated, it has grown. I realize you are stuck on bathrooms and locker rooms, but dozens of other school systems with millions of students have already written regulations. We are not breaking ground here. You heard a few weeks ago from the mother of the girl who was attacked. Clearly, that incident would have been avoided if the teacher were trained on how to deal with conversations in class about a student's gender. It could have been sidetracked if the security staff, nursing staff, and school administrators had been trained. The mediator for a sort of justice has made the unacceptable statement that we must agree to disagree about her gender. That sort of thing would be avoided if he were trained. This month, I myself heard a colleague say, "I don't feel like I have to use his/her, his pronouns, because she takes advantage of the privileges of both genders." What does one make of that? Some training would help. An administrator said, "Can't they use the bathrooms they were born with?" Another said, "They all use single-person restrooms, don't they?" Two staff people said, "The regulations are on hold, so I guess it's left up to me." I cannot tell you. My time is up. I have one more same thing to say. I'm going to miss you, Jane, and I'm going to miss you.
George Erickson?
I'm a Mason District Jeb Stewart Pyramid resident of many years. When I arrived, Fairfax County and FCPs were exemplars of superb county government and superb public school system with a strong financial foundation. This made FCPs a magnet that attracted and retained outstanding teachers. To regain that former stature, teacher compensation at superior levels is required. School board leadership performance at superior levels is also required. Neither condition presently exists. Correction of this situation must start with exemplary school board leadership in the conduct of school business, school board business. For this reason, school board member Pat Heinz must recuse herself or be recused from the expensive and community-dividing Jeb Stewart name-change proposal being advanced by conduct that violated the oath of office and the code of conduct of members. The process to decide the outcome of Jeb Stewart name-change proposal, as engineered by Chairman Evans and Member Heinz, was corrupted at inception and continues to be corrupt to this very meeting. The oath of office sworn to by all board members obligates them to, quote, "faithfully and impartially discharge," gross quote, "all their duties." To comply with this oath requires Heinz and Evans to be recused, either voluntarily or by board action. It also requires the other board members to stop casting an unseeing eye to the open unfairness, the covert partiality of treatment, and the downright biased manipulation of the process that has taken place. The board must now act to terminate the corruption of this process, to demonstrate its members' commitment to the highest standards of conduct: prudent financial stewardship, and fair, impartial, and transparent conduct of board business. Only that will put FCPs on the road back to its former exemplar status. Clearly, Member Heinz and Evans must recuse from the Jeb Stewart name-change process if requisite high standards of board leadership are to live at FCSB. I ask the board, if the corrupt process is not corrected and made fair, what road is left...
Could you wrap up in a sentence or two, Mr. Erickson?
I will wrap up right now. What road is left to right that wrong but litigation? Thank you.
Emma Chatten?
Greetings, board members, superintendent and staff. My name is Reverend Emma Chatten. I'm the pastor of the Metropolitan Community Church of Northern Virginia, a spiritual community for all people, no exceptions, no kidding. I also co-facilitate several groups for trans and non-binary individuals, teens, tweens, young adults, as well as their parents. In addition, I am the executive director of the Transgender Education Association of the Greater Washington Area. So, while I stand here alone this evening, I carry with me the voices and the hopes of many of your constituents, as well as their gratitude for your continuing to include GLBTIQ students in the 7th through 10th grade family life education curriculum. Physicist and cosmologist Stephen Hawking lamented that human aggression is the greatest threat that humanity currently faces. He said that the best cure for aggression is increased empathy, to bring us together in a peaceful and a loving state. That's not a minister or a theologian, that's a theoretical physicist, for goodness' sake. I believe education is essential in the process of increased empathy. It brings with it a greater understanding of the broad diversity of humanity and shows us that there is a big, wide, wonderful world out there. And even more essential is that education should lift society together, and every single one of us can benefit from a greater understanding and acceptance of one another. We do our best to prepare trans and gender-fluid children for the world, but we must also do better is to prepare the world for these children. This requires training and education, and this means the training and education of your staff. It simply isn't realistic to expect that every teacher and administrator automatically comes equipped with this knowledge and this understanding. Being inclusive requires homework. It also means being better prepared and equipping you, the board, for the important decisions that you must make. Get to know someone who is trans. You still may not understand the culture and the condition, but you may come to know greater empathy and the commonality of humanity that exists with all people. And that people who are strangers are simply strangers because we do not know them. And by showing hospitality and kindness to strangers, some people have entertained angels unaware. Finally, the children that you educate today will help to build the future that we all live in tomorrow. So, as a community, we all reap the benefits of the Fairfax County school system's broad inclusivity. And I'm very grateful for its national reputation as a leader and one of the best in this country. May it continue to be so.
Thank you, and thank you for having me tonight, everyone. My name is Wilson, and I'm a 2016 graduate of Oakton High School, as well as a lifelong member of this county. Tonight, I will speak on a matter of serious import to the FLEC Act report, namely, students' emotional and mental health, which is invariably affected by the name of their school. Over the past few months, we have experienced... Over the past few months, we have experienced fear in our communities. People feel emboldened to attack immigrants, foreigners, and anyone perceived as different. No one, particularly students, should have to suffer in such an environment. The tragic death of South Lake sophomore Nabir Hassanin this past weekend, regardless of motive, has made all people, particularly Muslims, feel unsafe. In these times, Fairfax County should make clear that all students are welcome, just as I and many others at Her Vigil this Wednesday stood with their community in solidarity. There is no better opportunity than renaming Jeb Stewart High School. As a recent graduate Chinese-American and son of immigrants, neither I nor my friends have any share in the Confederacy or the lost cause. But we do have a stake in America, our country. We believe in understanding the past without glorifying it. We believe in protecting heritage while promoting progress. We believe in history, not myths. This past weekend, I was in Richmond. I went to the church where Patrick Henry demanded liberty, the Capitol where the Confederate Congress gathered, and the memorial where Barbara John's struggle for equality is immortalized. I saw history. The name of Jeb Stewart High School is not history, but Confederate glorification. It is a monument to a mythic past, a more recent incarnation of the same racist sentiment behind the infamous movie Birth of a Nation. It must be exercised. Stewart fought to shamelessly perpetuate slavery and treason. He chose his hill to die on, the Confederacy. Let us not make the same mistake. When you vote next month, tear down this wall of hate. We can build something better. Our communities demand it. Our future looks upon us and asks us, "Where were you when you had the opportunity to right past wrongs and chart a better course?" Thank you.
Carol Nice.
Hello, my name is Carol Nice. I'm a Providence District resident, mother of six, and an FCPS graduate. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you tonight. As an FCPS stakeholder, a former educator, and because I've served on a school board myself, I started periodically attending these meetings about a year or so ago. And from my experience on a school board, I really empathize with your position that you can never please all of your constituents all of the time. But what's puzzled me, however, is why this school board spends so much time and money on issues that are inherently divisive and controversial, especially when you don't have to and when there are definitely other pressing issues. With regard to the family life curriculum, I'd like to ask, why does FCPS feel compelled to go so far beyond what is mandated by the Virginia Board of Education? In this forum, I realize that asking any kind of question is rhetorical because it's a public comment period, and you can't answer back. And it's for that reason that I've been hesitant to request a slot for public participation because ultimately, what I'd love to hear is some becauses to the many whys that have been voiced by so many, many constituents. Here are just a few. Why are you devoting so much time and money to developing controversial elements of the FLE curriculum when the majority of families would have little issue with the state standards of learning? Money is especially a concern when the budget is being balanced by increasing class sizes and freezing teacher pay. Why is it necessary to devote so much class time to FLE? In 9th grade, there are 10 90-minute sessions. That's a full two weeks of class time. A student completing K through 12 in FCPS will have had over 80 hours of FLE. Wouldn't teaching core academics be a better use of some of this class time? Why are you placing life science teachers in the impossible position of having to rectify the real science of X and Y chromosomes with unproven politically trendy gender fluidity? Why is it constructive to frighten and perhaps steal the innocence of nine- and 10-year-olds by introducing the concept of a father raping his daughter? How does this work to prevent such a tragedy? I think we can all agree that something like that is tragic. I just don't know if that's the way to do it. I just urge you to please take a look at all the lessons in the FLE curriculum with an eye towards both content and the classroom time spent. Too much of the program is insensitive to the diversity of the families in our school system. I know many who voted against the meals tax in November because they feel their concerns aren't being addressed. Please use the resources you are temporarily entrusted with with the advancement of universally acknowledged academic objectives instead of ones that are inherently controversial and divisive. So thank you again. Thank you for all you do, and especially for your endurance for these late-night meetings.
Keith Arthurs.
I'd like to say thank you for the opportunity to speak to you, to the school board, tonight. I am Keith Arthurs, and I'm a resident of Vienna, Virginia, and I have three children in the school system. Having a child in the 4th grade, I want to say that, first off, that I agree with the dissenting opinion on the Grade 3 video, that it should just replace the older problematic Grade 4 video. The message is identical, and it just was making updates to it that was less frightening and was an improvement over the inferior Grade 4 video, which used live actors, which I think, even when I saw it, was a little bit uncomfortable. So I recommend you just replace it instead of adding it in addition to. Aside to that, I want to highlight an issue with the FLE materials, which I noticed two years ago. The problem, one of the problems is the timing of the guideline changes in the comment period, and then the publication of the actual FLE materials with the lack of community input before its use in the curriculum. Fairfax County is home to one of the most diverse populations in the nation, and as such, great care needs to be taken when addressing sensitive topics in order to respect the various diverse cultural and moral differences that families may have. I am a Christian whose moral values align with the doctrinal statements of the prevailing majority of the religious groups in Fairfax County regarding abstinence, teachings on homosexuality, and transgender behavior. Fairfax County residents are 46% are affiliated with religion. The Catholic faith comprising 18% of that, and most of the other groups also having doctrinal statements that align with the Catholic Church. Our FLE guidelines took, our state FLE guidelines took great care with respect to the wide diversity of opinions on sensitive topics. And the Fairfax County FLE curriculum doesn't take that same great care. The goal shouldn't attempt to take sides on moral stances of sensitive topics where there's a valid difference of cultural and religious opinion. And that's outside, that is outside the authority of the schools to do that. Their job is sexual and reproductive health. And topics such as sexual orientation should be included in those sections with regard to sexual health and perhaps more guidance towards anti-bullying and those topics. But nothing should be inserted to persuade the moral views towards it. Our FLE program crosses the lines and smashes the wall of separation of church and state when it does that. It's the basic human right to adhere to the moral views of your religion. And that's according to the U.N. Declaration of Human Rights Articles 18 and 19. And it also says that we're free to hold and form opinions without government interference in regards to that. So inclusion, in these days, the partisan divide, rather than choose the solutions that divide and alienate, let's take greater care to apply to the FLE materials so that it does respect the great diversity that we have in our county. Thank you.
Charles Haver.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to yield the initial portion of my time to my daughter Victoria, who is a 2017 student at Jeb Stewart High School.
Hi, my name is Victoria Haver, and I graduated just last week from Jeb Stewart High School. And many people love to discuss the issue of the name change as a problem of race. If you wish to keep the name, you are racist, or you support racism. Case closed. Except not quite. Jeb Stewart's legacy is more complicated than either side. Let us not forget that he was a person, as valuable and admirable as any one of us. To some, he may in fact be a symbol of segregation; to others, a matter of pride. But this discussion, I do not believe, should be focused over the moral arguments of his name. The truth of the matter is that a decision to change the name of Jeb Stewart High School will have enormous repercussions on the community, monetarily and otherwise. The benefits remain small. To change the name of the school will not tackle its hardest problems. It will only increase division and tension. For example, our teacher retention rate has been low. FCPS teachers are paid below market average, and the conditions at Jeb Stewart are further encouraging their exodus from broken toilets to overcrowding in large classroom sizes. We should be focusing on these problems instead. If the name is an issue, students should be educated on its history, not encouraged to hide from a history that is ours, for better or for worse.
I would add to Victoria's comments by saying I fully support anything we can do to increase salary and retention of our teachers. I will state categorically, as a homeowner within the Stewart Pyramid, that I would support increasing our real estate tax to achieve that goal. Having said that, I would not support, my wife would not support, any effort or resources spent on changing the name. More than 90% of our wondrously diverse students at Jeb Stewart see no compelling need, and indeed, the compelling need is for increasing salaries, better retention, and improving education, which could and should include a study of the man himself. Both Jeb Stewart and I are graduates of the Military Academy at West Point, where our motto, since its inception more than 200 years ago, has been duty, honor, and country. That, those watchwords formed the basis and the foundation of the character of my fellow graduates as they chose whether to fight for the Union or fight for secession. I believe that Jeb Stewart chose wrongly. However, at a time when our fellow citizens referred to these United States instead of the United States, it is easier to understand why a man who devoted his entire life to duty, honor, and public service, who never earned his keep from the sweat of another's brow, would and could choose to name his home state as his country. Rather than attempting to erase that heritage, what better way to teach our children about the wrenching dilemmas of that time than to study the man and the character and the code and to think about the integrity, the ingenuity, the audacity that mark our raider as the proper mascot of our school? Thank you.
We also have two videos tonight, and the first is from Linda Wilson. Are we ready to run the video, Madam Clerk? All right.
Hello, I'm Dr. Linda Zamora-Wilson. I'm a Latina, an educator, and a concerned parent from Fairfax High School, and voicing concerns pertaining to FCPS curriculum and policy, more specifically, how curriculum is approved and how parents are informed. During the first week of school, my child brought home the English Core syllabus for me to sign. It contained this generic FCPS disclaimer. The first sentence gives the impression that the books are read in their entirety by all committee members. The terms administrators and teachers imply that trusted and trained professionals were part of the process. I was stunned when I recently was informed by the principal that there is no regulation mandating for the committee to read the book. As an educator, I find this a derelict in duty. As a parent, I find the first sentence meaningless. By using this statement, FCPS is implying clout to a process that lacks academia rigor. This is concerning because it opens the door for inappropriate material to be inserted into the curriculum. The second sentence states that the book may contain explicit sexual situations. As a parent reading this, I make certain assumptions. I know that the school can't show R-rated movies without my permission, so I set a reasonable expectation that R-rated books are not approved. This is also an incorrect assumption and couldn't be further from the truth, my case in point. This is When I Was Puerto Rican. It's a memoir of a Puerto Rican girl coming of age. It's mandatory reading for 10th grade English, and I'm going to show two pages from it. Remember, this book has been approved by administrators, teachers, and parents. I've also been personally informed by the principal and English department showed that they would have no issue reading this book out loud in class. Note, if this book were to be made into a movie, it would be rated in C-17 or rated X for nudity and sexual acts. This is not at all appropriate for 10th grade, let alone high school. Aside from the inappropriateness, the book portrays minority women in outmoded roles and references several scenes where the child is sexually assaulted. The humiliating and crude act is simply accepted as part of Latina life, which normalizes the sexual degradation of women. As a Latina, I find this unacceptable, disturbing, and in direct conflict with Regulation 3011.3. In conclusion, I am requesting the following from the board. One, remove the book from the approved list. Two, change policy in Regulation 3009.10 to reflect the same requirements from both the approving committee and any person challenging a book. Three, change policy such that the committee must read the approved book in its entirety. Four, change policy such that all approved books must be rated same as movies. This is a familiar rating system, and it will help the parent to set accurate expectations on the material and enable a quicker response if seen as inappropriate. Five, change policy such that if an approved book has not been read by the committee, then the syllabus must explicitly state that. Six, change policy such that if an approved book has not been rated by the committee, then the syllabus must explicitly state that the book may contain rated R or in C-17 material. This minimizes erroneous assumptions and fosters transparency and trust between parents and school. Thank you.
The second video is from Monique Barudy.
Barudy, and I'm a Fairfax County resident and FCPS parent. I would like to talk about the Fleecak Recommendations Report. I have two main concerns. My first is that the objectives listed for our curriculum are so general that they leave a large amount of room for interpretation. This is very apparent from the recent review of two different videos to support the objective of helping elementary school children identify inappropriate touches and how to respond. One has a tone of empowerment, and one emphasizes victimhood. One video clearly explains to students how to seek help, and one does not. One presents the information in a non-threatening manner, and one shows a young girl struggling as she's pinned to her bed by her older stepbrother. Both videos meet the objective, but in very different ways. Why don't parents get the opportunity to review these materials and comment on them before they are chosen as part of the curriculum? Last spring, there was a community comment period for the annual Fleecak Report that ended on June 24th of 2016. But the new materials were not available until August. So who is reviewing the actual materials? There was not a single Fleecak meeting between March of 2016 and October of 2016. If Fleecak is not familiar with the materials for each objective, who is? I feel strongly that a complete review of every lesson in FLE is required. Just approving a high-level objective is not enough when you don't know how that objective is being achieved. My other concern is regarding the crosswalk of Virginia Department of Education objectives for FLE and the FCPS FLE objectives. Let's start with the fact that FCPS erases the innocence of five-year-olds in kindergarten by introducing the idea of bad touches, whereas the state objectives in kindergarten focus on positive expressions of love and friendship. The VDOE objectives introduce age-appropriate, medically accurate information about babies, starting in 1st grade, with the idea that humans and other mammals have babies. In 2nd grade, they teach that babies grow in a mother's body. And in 3rd grade, they teach that babies begin with a sperm and an egg. By contrast, FCPS suddenly slams nine-year-olds with information about erections and nocturnal emissions in 4th grade, with no mention at all of babies until 5th grade, when sexual intercourse is introduced. It's no wonder so many children are uncomfortable talking about reproduction-related topics and don't see babies as an important part of the equation. We wait until they're old enough to sexualize reproduction and be embarrassed by it, rather than seeing it as a natural biological process. A complete review of the materials being used in FCPS FLE and a realignment with state standards is desperately needed.
That concludes citizen participation. We go to Student Representative Matters, and I call on Ms. Chu.
Thank you, Chair. So this being my last time to speak really quick, this happens every single time, I have a long list of thank-yous, and the first thank-you actually goes out to all of you in the audience, the citizens, especially those who are speaking during citizen participation and who send videos. Every single time, I have to speak after you guys, and every single time, your words still ring in my head, so it's really hard to focus. But again, thank you, because that leaves a very lasting impression, and it's taught me that there's always work to be done, but that people in our county have such strong voices. So thank you for coming today and for speaking. A second thank-you goes out to all the students that I've been able to meet this year. I've been able to meet so many, from our youngest children to our oldest students, and I've learned so much about the strong voices that we have in our county, and it's been a blessing to be in Fairfax County from kindergarten to 12th grade. So it's been a very long run, and I want to say thank you to all the students out there. The third is to my parents, who unfortunately couldn't be here today, but who faithfully text me at 9:50, 9:55, 10:00, 10:05, up until 2:00 AM, reminding me that I have to go home. And a very special thank you to my friends who faithfully pick up the phone at 2:00 AM when my car breaks down to pick me up. So there's so many people always looking out for me, and I just want to thank all them today. All of them are really out there, going into new internships and jobs, and I wish them all the best, and they've been so supportive. A big fourth thank you goes to the three moms over there, Ms. Mulberg, Ms. Benedicto, and Ms. Madeja, who have been so wonderful to me, who check in on me all the time, texting me, emailing me, asking me what's up, and it's just such a wonderful, it's just so wonderful to keep in mind that there are always not just one, but three more moms out there looking out for me all the time. So thank you for everything you've done this year. And finally, of course, to all the board members, I didn't get to say this earlier, but I want to say thank you, because I know that learning is limitless. If there's one thing that FCPS has taught me, it's that learning is limitless. But you guys have teaching me. You taught me what it means to be a citizen of the community and to the world. So thank you, guys, for a wonderful year. I'm going to miss this, but I've already talked to Ben. We know we're going to come back all the time. I might not come back as much as he does, but I will be back very soon, because FCPS is home. So thank you for teaching me that.
Thank you, Ms. Chu. We will miss you very, very much. We now turn to confirmation of action taken in closed meeting. This is the portion of the meeting where the board will confirm any action regarding issues that are discussed in the closed meeting. These issues may include action items regarding student disciplinary matters. Board members have discussed each individual case, and at this time, will make several motions to confirm the recommended action. I call on Mr. Moon for a motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. With great pleasure, I move that the school board reappoint Dr. Stephen Lockhart as Deputy Superintendent and authorize the Chair to sign the employment contract on behalf of the board according to the terms and conditions discussed in closed session.
Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Palczek. Mr. Moon, did you want to speak?
Just briefly, again, I want to thank service of Dr. Lockhart as interim superintendent. Your tenure is not over yet. It goes on till our new superintendent comes on board on July the 10th. But once he comes on board, we fully expect you to continue to serve us as Deputy Superintendent, which is also your desire, I understand. And thank you. I look forward to a continuing working relationship with you.
Ms. Palczek?
It's also briefly, thank you for your steady hand, your thoughtfulness and compassion and work in support of all of your staff as we have gone through this transition, and we're so grateful that you will be here as we transition in Dr. Braybrand. So thank you, and I hope you get some rest this summer.
Ms. Schultz?
I hope you think this is a good thing. We do view this as a reward for your service and not a punishment, that you have to, you get to stay with us. So, you know, I want to make sure that you're not lake-bound with Dr. Lipp. We've had a rough year that, you know, a year ago today, looking forward, we would not have expected, we would put this behind us and have in our rearview mirror what is in our rearview mirror, which is kind of a mess. But you've gotten us through, and through the whole thing, the saving grace has been the hope that you were going to be there at the end, to stay with us, and be a steady hand to a new leader. And I, for one, am very, very grateful for your leadership during this time, stormy as it was, and the fact that you are going to be a tremendous asset to us going forward and to Dr. Braybrand. So thank you very much, Dr. Lockhart.
Ms. McLaughlin?
I want to enthusiastically support the words of praise that my colleagues have given you, Dr. Lockhart, without question, the time that you've spent at the helm. Not only did we, as board members, feel great reassurance with you doing the work you did, but we really saw through the leadership team that the business continued. The system was able to progress in very positive ways with a lot of things going on, and throughout it, you were tireless, but continued to bring that warm smile of yours to the work every day, and it's deeply appreciated. So we're excited to be approving your contract and look forward to a great deal of time working with you in the future.
Ms. Corbett Sanders?
So Dr. Lipp said earlier that "all means all," and that is something that, in having had the pleasure of working closely with you over the past seven months, I believe that you are the real thing when it means "all means all," because you have put your all into every day that you have filled in as the superintendent. And so we are very appreciative of that. I also believe that, moving forward, this system is about to experience the real dream team. You and Dr. Braybrand are going to be an incredible team. And to use his quote, "It's going to be all about doing the main thing, keeping the main thing the main thing," and that is keeping our students at the center of all of our decision-making. So, Dr. Lockhart, I appreciate your quiet leadership, the integrity that you bring to all of your work, and your very perceptive approach to doing things. So thank you, and it is with great pleasure that I support this contract.
Mrs. Strauss?
Thank you, Dr. Lockhart. Thank you for the incredibly heavy lifting that you have done, and your desire to stay on, which is wonderful, that you, after Dr. Braybrand comes, and that you partner with all of us and step back. Please thank your family. This has been difficult, and I know that you commute in your long hours and very early mornings to get here. So please, on behalf of all of us, thank them for their patience and their willingness to support all of us and the children in Fairfax County by supporting you and your job. We are very, very grateful. And by approving this contract, of course, you stay under your position until July 10th, but the fact that you have affirmatively said that you stay to support and partner with all of us, we are very, very appreciative of that. Thank you.
Darnett Kofax?
Steve, I want to thank you for the extra hours you put in. I know it was very difficult at times, but you never complained. You were always professional, and I just appreciate you being there at the helm when we were suddenly without a superintendent. So thank you for everything. I know you are going to be a great right hand to our next superintendent, and we look forward to continued working with you as the deputy back in your slot. But thank you for everything that you've done to this point. It's been magnificent.
I too want to thank you, Dr. Lockhart. You've been a marvelous leader, and we could not have been where we are today without your calm leadership. And so I'm delighted we will continue to have you there. I want to reiterate, you are still interim superintendent until July 10th. We're not going to let you get off the hook. And I know that the transition is already well underway, and we appreciate the smoothness with which that is going. And with that, I will call on the vote on the motion to reappoint Dr. Steve Lockhart. All in favor, raise your hand, and that is unanimous.
Ryan said, "Are we going to take a photo?"
I now call on Ms. Schultz for a motion.
I move to reject the recommendation of the hearing officer and to take the action discussed in closed meeting regarding the employee identified in a closed meeting, and to authorize the chairman to notify the employee by letter of the board's decision.
Second? Seconded by Mr. Moon. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those in favor, raise your hand.
You're going to have to call it, Ms. Janey.
Okay, oh, correct, I'm sorry. Hines, Palczek, Schultz, Corbett Sanders, Evans, Moon, McLaughlin, Wilson, Darnett Kofax, and McElveen. All those opposed, all those abstaining, Strauss, and that motion passes. I call on Ms. Corbett Sanders for a motion.
I move to deny the school reassignment appeal of a student who used illegal drugs at school during the school day, and to confirm the disciplinary decision of the Division Superintendent.
Seconded by Mrs. Strauss. All those in favor, raise your hand. Hines, Palczek, Corbett Sanders, Strauss, Evans, Moon, McLaughlin, Darnett Kofax, McElveen. All those opposed, all those abstaining, Schultz, and Wilson. That motion passes. I call on Mrs. Strauss for a motion.
Thank you. I move to deny the school reassignment appeal of a student who assaulted another student and to confirm the disciplinary decision of the Division Superintendent.
Seconded by Mrs. Corbett Sanders. All those in favor, raise your hand. And that is unanimous. That motion passes. I call on Ms. Corbett Sanders for a motion.
I move to deny the school reassignment appeal of a student who made threats against specified students and the larger school community, and to confirm the disciplinary decision of the Division Superintendent.
Seconded, seconded by Ms. Darnett Kofax. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Hines, Palczek, Schultz, Corbett Sanders, Strauss, Evans, Moon, Wilson, Darnett Kofax, McElveen. All those opposed, all those abstaining, McLaughlin. That motion passes. And we, I announced this at the beginning, but item 4.02 has been pulled from tonight's I go to item 4.03, Agreement with U.S. Soccer Foundation for Mini-Pitch Play Area at North Springfield Elementary School. I call on Ms. McLaughlin for a motion.
I move that the school board approve the installation of a mini-pitch play area with associated logos per the drawings and specifications previously submitted to and approved by the Office of Design and Construction Services, and authorize the Division Superintendent or Assistant Superintendent Facilities and Transportation Services, either of whom may act without the other, to negotiate, execute, and administer on behalf of the school board the grant agreement and any related agreements in connection with the mini-pitch at North Springfield Elementary School.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Darnett Kofax. Would you like to speak to your motion, Ms. McLaughlin?
Actually, since I see Mr. Plattenberg is with us, I would like to defer my speaking to this, and if he could just provide a summary to the full board, what you provided to me and Ms. Darnett Kofax about the benefits of the mini-pitch play area, I think that would be most beneficial to the board members.
Well, I'd be glad to. This in-kind grant really is providing a surface at North Springfield Elementary that really is something that we don't provide. And in addition to just a regular asphalt area, it's providing a type of surface that I don't believe these students and these children, and let alone the community, would have access to otherwise. It's just a great opportunity and a real good partnership.
Darnett Kofax, would you like, oh, are you still speaking?
Yeah, so now that he's given the summary, I just share with my colleagues, I do think this is an example of where we benefit from the public-private partnership-type model here, and I do hope that people will be supporting it. This is a school that is in my district.
Ms. Darnett Kofax, would you like to speak to your second?
Briefly, I just think it's wonderful to see this kind of support from our alumni. I thank the efforts of Mr. Goodson for his work with the U.S. Soccer Federation to get this project done in such an expedient manner, so that children in Springfield and other districts are able to use this space in the fall, and I urge my colleagues to support the installation of this mini-pitch play area.
Thank you, Ms. Darnett Kofax. And with that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. That vote is unanimous. That motion passes. Unfortunately, I have had a small family emergency, so I'm going to turn over the rest of the meeting. I'm going to turn over the gavel to Mrs. Strauss. Yeah.
Thank you. The next agenda item is, agenda item 4.04, Family Life Education Advisory Committee Recommendations, and I will call on Ms. Palczek for a motion.
I move that the board accept the recommendation to approve the recommended media and lesson objectives as detailed in the agenda item and as reviewed and recommended by the Family Life Education Curriculum Advisory Committee.
Seconded by Ms. Hines. Ms. Palczek, would you like to speak to your motion?
Just briefly, that, as we do every year, the FLECAC recommendations were brought to staff, and our recommendations were approved, their recommendations were approved and incorporated in the curriculum, and I hope that my colleagues will join us in supporting that these go through for the next school year.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. Would you like to speak to your second? Ms. Schultz? Yes, so akin to some of the comments that we heard from the podium this evening, I specifically have questions, and I don't know which, okay, Dr. Payne, if you want to comment, in particular-
extended meeting to discuss the benefits and challenges of both, and it was brought up again in another meeting about using the new media for the grade four. As I shared with the committee, instructionally, there is a precedence for showing a video more than once, but the committee felt, the majority opinion was, they felt strongly that both had their merits and wanted to use both. Instructionally, there was a precedence, and we brought the new video with the option to do one, the other, or both.
So the older videos still could be shown?
Yes.
But does it have to be shown? Is it the discretion of the teacher?
It's not at the discretion of the teacher, it's part of the approved materials.
But the second video, I'm sorry, I'm still unclear if both videos can be used or if it's, if they're, if they both will be used or can be used?
The committee, the majority of the committee voted to show the new title at grade three and retain the current video at grade four.
So, and this is, this is where I have a little bit of a concern about how we go about, we have, we don't necessarily have FLECAC meeting year-round, we don't necessarily have a protocol, we sort of shelve them when we feel like the work is finished, when, you know, these are volunteers and we could be utilizing, this is obviously, not contentious, but is an issue of great interest in many communities and in the county. And so I pulled this off of the consent agenda because this is a very important topic, and I feel like if we just, if the board just keeps placing FLECAC on the consent agenda, it's as if, you know, it doesn't even warrant us discussing it, it's just, you know, moving on to the next item. And I do think it's important to a lot of people, and these are the youngest elementary-age students. I mean, I'm the only person here who, I have a current third grader who after tomorrow is going to be a fourth grader, you know, so, you know, I'm, you know, living in the shoes of the parents that have, you know, this concern, you know, these are the parents that are talking to me. So I am basically, I don't fundamentally have an issue with the FLECAC report, but because there are issues like this that I feel that are unresolved, I'm not going to be approving this report, not because I don't approve of the work that FLECAC has done, but because I think that we as a board haven't necessarily resolved how, and I look forward to maybe over the next year, a little bit working with you and staff and the rest of my board members on how to better utilize FLECAC year-round, how to address when there's a minority report issue like this, you know, is there something that, I mean, nobody on the board, I mean, we're getting ready to approve this, nobody on the board, to my knowledge, has seen this. So we're about to approve something, you know, in our curriculum that nobody's ever bothered to even look at. And, you know, there was a speaker who submitted a very cogent video testimonies as, you know, we're approving things when the committee didn't meet for half a year and the comment period was before the materials were even produced. So how can you comment on something you've never seen? So it's very difficult for me to justify as a board member approving parts of curriculum that I've never even looked at, so I'm not going to be doing that tonight.
Ms. McLaughlin?
If I could, I'd like to just add a little bit to what Dr. Payne mentioned-
Please.
And I appreciate Ms. Schultz bringing this to the, you know, giving us the opportunity to take this off of consent and talk about it a little bit, because of my five years in the district, this is the first time that we've probably had such a strong dissenting opinion on one of the proposed objectives. And I think it's important to clarify just a couple things about the dissenting opinion. So, again, the issue for the dissenting opinion really was that they felt that the new material, the new video, would be more appropriate to show at both third and fourth grade, where the majority felt like there should be a different video at third and fourth grade. So the board tonight has several different options. You could accept the majority opinion, you could accept the dissenting opinion, you could do neither. But I think it's important to realize that we're going to look at this issue again next year, so the committee next year can revisit the fourth grade video, and if at that time they want to make a change, they're certainly able to do so. And then the other piece, the information that I think is important is that the board also asked the committee to reconvene in April, which they did, to take a deeper look at how our program in Fairfax County compares to the state program. And we provided the board with an outline of where, you know, our program compares to the state program, and we're going to continue to look at those issues with more information and more study on the particular lesson objectives that the committee has requested more information and more discussion on for next year. So we're planning to do that, and I think we'll have an opportunity to engage in more discussion on some of these issues, both with the committee and with the board.
Well, I really appreciate actually that, that a little bit broader explanation, Dr. Persidio, because we just went through, and I don't know how many hours the board spent on advisory committee reports, where we listened to advisory committees to the board and to the superintendent and listened to their year-long work. We don't ever get that from FLECAC. We don't sit down as a board and have FLECAC present to us. We never have a discussion with them. I've never sat and watched, you know, them, you know, converse with us as a board. The board has never had a work session to talk about this. I mean, we're literally approving curriculum. I don't know, I could swag it on how many third and fourth graders there are in Fairfax County, I don't know, something like maybe if there's 50,000 high schoolers, you know, roughly, I don't know, 20,000 or so third and fourth graders, maybe, maybe more. We're approving curriculum tonight for, you know, tens of thousands of kids, and we've never talked about it, we haven't looked at it, we haven't seen, we haven't watched the videos, and we've never had a report presented to us as a board, as an advisory committee, when Minority Student Achievement we have presented, we have Head Start presenting to us, we have Advanced Academics presenting to us, we have all the advisory committees presenting to us, and we just sort of leave the Family Life Education Curriculum Advisory Committee in our blind spot. We don't meet with them, we don't talk to them, and I think it's problematic. And I think in order to have some degree of integrity going forward, that we take seriously the advisory role of the people who volunteer to go through this and meet with us, that we don't just accept something over email and try to figure out later, after it was put on a consent agenda, what the real issues are. So I look forward to us having a slightly more robust approach to this part of our curriculum for many thousands of our children.
Ms. McLaughlin?
So, Ms. Schultz, you may not be aware that I also did ask that this be moved from consent to action, and it just so happened today, I met with some constituents who had scheduled an appointment with me maybe a week or two ago, and so I talked to them today about 2:30, and they were sharing with me a couple of concerns. I want to first start with praise. They very much believe in the merits of FLE. One father is like a 40-year resident here in Fairfax County, and his children came up through our school system and had nothing but praise for the education his children received. But he did say that he would, he shares similar concerns with others in the community that we might, as a board, need to just do a little bit deeper dive in understanding our FLE, that right now, the way that the advisory committee works with FLE, they review objectives, and then the lessons are developed and implemented. And to his understanding, the lessons don't actually come back to the advisory committee, and as we know, there is the objective, but then there's how we deliver it. And so they were suggesting to me that, like, tonight, where we're going to vote on a couple of videos and things, but if you don't have the lessons that accompany it, it's hard to know how the video fits in context to the information we're imparting on the students. And they also said that it might be helpful that if the FLE appointees that board members present, that if we could, you know, make efforts to have subject matter experts in sex education and family life education, age appropriateness, that that might be something we seek out in the future with our appointees. And, you know, that they did talk about things like the video presenter that we had during citizen participation about parents being made more aware when there might be sexually explicit material, or maybe some that might be a little more unsettling for families. And so they didn't discount that some of this is very important and we do want to inform our children, but that some parents may not be aware. And so this one group actually has gone through all 12 years of FLE, and they've kind of done an analysis with a stoplight of red, yellow, and green, saying, you know, you might want to, you know, caution parents, go look at the lessons before you necessarily, you know, consent that your child's going to see all of this. I will just preface that, as someone with a master's in social work, my appointee had a doctorate in nursing and also is a nurse practitioner, I am such a believer in the importance of accurate and timely information in family life education. And, but I do think that, I have heard parent concerns about, like, the book that we just saw, the sexually explicit material up there. It, being supportive and promoting really good education for our children, to Ms. Schultz's point, we still have to be knowledgeable about what we're approving and what's being put in front of our children. So in terms of tonight's vote, I do share Ms. Schultz's concern. I don't think that we as a board have deliberated on this. I don't have enough information in what's there, even in the report, to feel comfortable recommending this. So I did want to let Dr. Payne know that I've heard nothing but praise for your great work, and I want to make sure you knew that my abstention tonight is not a reflection on the great respect I have for the work you're doing. But I was one of the board members who voted for the crosswalk, I was also one of the board members, we were in a minority voice that said we really needed a work session with staff, and I will still continue to support that work. And Dr. Persidio, thank you too for your leadership and your work on this.
Ms. Hines?
Yeah, just a couple of background questions, as long as we're talking about this. It's my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, that the state law requires school boards to approve these, is that why we're doing this tonight?
Board of Education guidelines require that we have community input.
Okay, so the Board of Education guidelines require us to have the FLECAC committee, some sort of a FLECAC advisory committee?
Some type of advisory committee and evidence of community input and feedback.
Okay, and so I imagine school boards around Virginia may do this differently? Or is it pretty uniform?
Yes, they may do it differently. This has just been the process since, process since before my time, so to speak, so it's just what the county has done.
Yeah, but before my time too, actually, yeah. So I do recall one time we had a FLECAC report directly to the board, a few years ago, and I forget why that was, but it was a work session.
Work session, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, we did, yeah.
We have done that in the past.
But it's not a regular thing. We don't, we accept a report, but we don't have a physical report, you know, as we do with our other advisory committees. I think that's true. Just another clarifier, because, you know, we all know this, but I do feel sometimes when I talk to people in the community that they don't realize that parents can opt their children out of any or all FLE lessons. Is that correct?
Correct, and all the lessons are available online for parents to see.
Right, so we have availability online, and I think we have worked over the last few years to make sure that those lessons are easily available, that parents are notified about it, and that the process for opting children out has gotten easier over the last few years. So that's another thing I think we keep an eye on as a board, because it's important if we offer that opt-out that we make it real and accessible. So, thank you.
Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Yes, thank you, and I think it's very helpful for us to be having this conversation tonight. I have actually spoken with my appointee to the FLECAC throughout the year as they've been discussing this curriculum, and it's my understanding, and maybe it's clarification that I'm looking for, is that what we're really talking about is the introduction of a new video at third grade and maintaining the video at fourth grade that has already been used with our students in fourth grade for the past several years. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I have to say that that is a clarification that I thought was very helpful. I also understand that the FLECAC discussed this quite in depth and actually did it on two separate occasions and voted twice regarding this video as far as the recommendation. So I think that's very helpful to know as far as background. But I do want to, well, to extend my thanks for the very careful and deliberate work that the FLECAC has begun on the crosswalk between the Virginia State Guidelines and our Fairfax County curriculum. I think that's helpful. I also want to emphasize that Fairfax County has prided itself for years on having a more robust curriculum at all levels and in all different subject areas, that we tend to go well beyond what the state recommendations are. Having said that, I do welcome the idea of having a fuller discussion about the work of the FLECAC in the future, because I think it's always helpful to hear from each and every one of our citizen advisory committees. However, I wanted to talk a little bit about the opt-out, which Mrs. Hines mentioned, and that's something that's really important for the community to know about, and perhaps we need to do a little bit more in educating our community about their ability, you know, parents have ownership of their students' education when it comes to family life education. That's why it's not in the health curriculum. And when parents take ownership of their students' education, what that does is allow parents to decide which portions of a curriculum they want their students to participate in as part of the classroom experience and to decide which portions of the curriculum they want to take ownership and educate their children about some sensitive issues in their own home. And so I always urge parents to take ownership. I also think though, and I've heard this consistently, that when children are opted out of a classroom experience, that it is important for all of us in the education system to make sure that they are given real and meaningful work. And so that's something that I would like to see a little bit more focus on, not only educating our students, our parents, on the ability to opt their children out, but also educating them on what their students' experience will be in perhaps a deeper dive on a health-related topic while the rest of their classmates are in the classroom.
Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, this is an interesting conversation. I think that I'm going to echo the comments of some of my other board members, because I certainly don't feel like I have enough information to vote on whether or not to make the changes that are, that we are-
And when parents take ownership of their students' education, what that does is allow parents to decide which portions of a curriculum they want their students to participate in as part of the classroom experience, and to decide which portions of the curriculum they want to take ownership and educate their children about some sensitive issues in their own home. And so, I always urge parents to take ownership. I also think though, and I've heard this consistently, that when children are opted out of a classroom experience, that it is important for all of us in the education system to make sure that they are given real and meaningful work. And so, that's something that I would like to see a little bit more focus on, not only educating our students, our parents, on the ability to opt their children out, but also educating them on what their students' experience will be in perhaps a deeper dive on a health-related topic while the rest of their classmates are in the classroom.
Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, this is an interesting conversation. I think that I'm going to echo the, the comments of some of my other board members, because I certainly don't feel like I have enough information to vote on whether or not to make the changes that are, that we are voting on tonight. So, but along those same lines, and, and I think this would be helpful for the community, if you could explain how families and parents could review the FLE curriculum? How, how do they do that?
They access the curriculum through the FCPS 24/7 Blackboard in parent view. They use their SIS account to get to that curriculum. Any media we have streaming rights for is there as well. Schools also offer preview nights, evening opportunities, where they send letters out, and families are invited to come in and view materials there, as well as, they're available in the schools during the school day. We do have the lessons at the City of Fairfax Regional Library. We don't have media there, but we do have the print materials there as well.
Okay, that, that's terrific. So, I think it's at the FCPS website through Blackboard, and they just use their same login that they have?
Their SIS parent account.
And then they would go within Blackboard to FLE? Is there like a button for FLE, or something like that?
Yes, when they log in, there would be a, there's a tab at the top that says Curriculum, and they click on that, and it gets them right to Family Life Education. It has every grade level there. It's not like elementary parents can only get the elementary curriculum. It gives them access to all of it.
All grade levels.
Yeah. And I think that's, that's terrific, and I, and I was, what I think I heard you say was that the Board of Education requires that you demonstrate engagement and input from the community. We obviously have some input from the community tonight, and it, it was pretty clear that they didn't like some of the aspects of it. How do you take that into account? I mean, how, obviously, we have FLECAC committee, but when, when you hear things like this, what, how do you respond to it? Is there some way that, that families and parents can feel like they're being heard? What is the, is there any, maybe there is a, maybe there's a way that you guys connect with communities or community engagement, just sort of generally to allow parents to reflect back the concerns that they have?
It depends. I have had one-on-one conversations and phone calls from parents, and actually gone ahead in the following year and made revisions based on their feedback. So, I think some of the things that, that people had concerns about, that are reflected in the comments in this particular report, will be things that we will focus on when we do the review next year. So, that would be an opportunity to go back and, and take another look at that.
Right. So, so if they're, if they're on Blackboard, and they've gone to the FLE curriculum, and they're reviewing something, is there a link then to, that they can click on to provide their kind of immediate response to something?
There's not a link there, but all the communications that go out, direct them to their schools for some of the questions, and then anything about the program, it directs them to my office and to me directly.
Yeah. One, one thing in particular tonight that one of the speakers mentioned was the concern that, that there might be material within FLE, the FLE curriculum, that runs counter to their strongly held religious beliefs, and, and that does, that potentially could sweep in a pretty broad swath of, of the families that are in FCPS. So, that is a point of concern, and I would urge you to sort of keep an eye on that particular aspect of concern that parents have, because I think that is something that we do owe it, in, in terms of being welcoming of all ideas and inclusion that, that we, that we respect, deeply held religious convictions in, in the parents charged to be the primary educator of their kids in those, in those areas.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Moon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am, I am going to support a motion that, just in, in response to some of the comments made by my colleagues, that I, I want to say that in the past, board, you know, when board saw the needs, we scheduled work sessions to get the presentations from FLECAC and staff to go over ideal recommendations. And sometimes, when the recommendations were, you know, very minimal, and those substantial, you know, changes, then we, board chose not to, you know, schedule work session. But it will be up to the board, up to the board, always schedule a work session to have a discussion on FLECAC recommendations. The, a slight distinction between FLECAC and other advisory committees we have is, if you look at the regulation, FLECAC's role is to advise curriculum coordinator, as opposed to advising the school board. So, if you want to change that role, we can also change that role to, through our policy modifications. But other advisory committees, MSAOC and AAPAC, they are advisory committee to the school board. So, they report directly to us.
Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Just a quick question. You mentioned that the videos are accessible online if we have the streaming rights for them. So, are the two videos that are being recommended, are they online? Or the one, the new video, and then the existing?
The new video, we, we will have streaming rights for. We haven't paid for those yet, pending, you know, approval. The other video, we, I think there are two, maybe three videos in all the curriculum that we do not have streaming rights for, because we are not able to purchase them from the vendors. So, the, the current grade four video in question is, we do not have streaming rights for that.
Ms. Schultz, have a go back?
With that last little bit of information, so, so, I'm sorry. This is just, this is very difficult. So, we're, we're approving something that none of us have ever seen, that there's been a strong amount of dissension, like the most ever, on family life, and we can't even go online and see it, because, one, we don't own and have no streaming rights for, and the other, we haven't paid for streaming rights yet. I, I'm, I'm going to make a motion, I, this is off the cuff, I'm sorry, but I'm going to make a motion that we postpone this. I think we need to have some more conversation. We're, we're literally about to approve something not only we've not had no conversation about, we can't even, ourselves, as board members, go online and look at. We'd have to, like, go to gatehouse and have special access with staff. So, I'd like to make a motion to postpone to a date certain. You could, you know, Ms. Mulberg, you could give me a future meeting date, but, you know, whatever that date certain is, we'll get it. I, I, I'm making a motion to postpone this.
All right. Ms. Schultz, you are making a motion to delay this item until a date certain. We need a date certain to insert into the motion. July 13?
July 13th will work for me.
Okay. Motion to delay until July 13. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Wilson. Ms. Schultz, would you like to speak to your motion?
I mean, I, I can't, I literally could not even pull this up right now and look at it as a board member, if I wanted to. And so, you know, I, parents commenting on it, who were part of the committee, so they had the privilege to see it. Anybody who watches this, who has a rising third grader, a rising fourth grader, can't go online on Blackboard and even look at this material. And I, I don't understand how, with any integrity, we as a board can sit here and say, yes, let's, let's pass and, and accept the FLECAC report. How do we accept recommendations on something that we've never even seen? So, I, I think it's, we, this is one of those reasonable and prudent, let's, let's take a couple of weeks so we can at least see this material, that there's been an expression of concern about. This is where, this is our wheelhouse.
Mr. Wilson, would you like to speak to your second?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. This is, I mean, I think this is a completely appropriate motion. I am reminded of Colonel Clink a little bit, "I see nothing, I hear nothing, I know nothing, and we're going to vote." So, I would urge all of my colleagues to delay this vote until we've all had a chance to review and consider what we're voting on.
Ms. Heinz?
Well, so, I think my two colleagues raise a good point. If there's something in an advisory committee report that you're concerned about, we all always have the opportunity to dig deeper and get more information. Am I correct that the report that we're now voting on was new business on May 25?
That's correct. And there's just one other point of clarification, and we're certainly fine if the board would like more time to deliberate on this. That is not a problem. But just a point of clarification, as a reminder, the current fourth grade video was approved by the board in 2010, and we've been using it since that time. So, it's not a new piece of material. It actually is an approved piece of instructional material. And the new video, the third grade video, even though we haven't purchased it yet, because we were considering purchasing it, it was available for streaming during the 30-day community review period. So, parents could go on during that time, and they could have accessed it at that time.
Okay. So, I guess the concern is that board members at this point, you know, can't do that, or community members at this point can't do that. But I, you know, I do have some sympathy, but I, I think we have advisory committees so that we don't have to do all the work, right? We, we delegate a lot of things, we have to. We already spend too much time, I think, with each other. And, and, you know, it's just not our job to make all of these decisions, but that's why we have advisory committees. And I think, as I say, if there's something an advisory committee does that we're concerned about and want more information on, any one of us individually can, can certainly get that and have access to it always. So, I'm concerned about pushing this off now, especially since we have had a month, since this was new business. Individual board members have had a month to look at this video if you were concerned about it and wanted to do that. I think that's plenty of time. Also, if we move this to July, is there any, does that cause any problems for our process going forward, or does it not matter?
We would be able to accommodate a delay.
Okay. All right. Well, I, I see that it's not a problem, but I'm still not going to support it, because I, you know, I, I think we have had plenty of time to look at this if we wanted to.
Ms. McLaughlin?
So, I appreciate staff answering the question I had with respect to the motion, which is accessibility to being able to see it. I guess where I'm with this right now is, the committee said, "We're fine with both videos." It's just where the dissent was that they said, one, the dissenting opinion wanted to get rid of the old video, just have the new video.
That's correct.
And the majority said, "Let's, let's use them both."
That's correct.
And Dr. Presidio, you noted that the board approved the older video in 2010, which at the time, the only board members who are still currently serving are, I believe, Ms. Evans, Ms. Strauss, and Mr. Moon. So, in, in terms of board members being able to maybe appreciate what the advisory committee is putting forward, that's where the difficulty is, that we can't see the video that they found frightening and perhaps not appropriate. And so, I, I sympathize with what Ms. Heinz is saying, you know, that, the, the weight of the work that the board has and what we delegate to our committees. But because I am one of those board members who felt that the board really hasn't committed some time, and I am very proud of the fact that our board, over the years, have been able to, you know, peel back the onion and look at things a little more carefully, and perhaps look at maybe nuancing recommendations that come from the committee. I, I would hope we would go ahead and postpone this, simply because I haven't heard a single one of my colleagues at this dais talk about seeing these videos, and can speak with convincing or compelling reassurances to, to those of us who have concerns that we should greenlight it. I definitely, as a board member, think if you haven't seen the videos, then given Dr. Presidio has said we could postpone to the next meeting, I think we owe that to our communities. And so, I hope people might consider the merits of postponing out, see any harm from it, but I would hope that there's a lot to be gained from it.
Ms. Corbett Sanders?
So, the report that we're approving actually only has formal recommendations for grade three, which everybody has said they support the new video for grade three. Recommendations for grade 10, which we've heard minimal about, and recommendations for grades seven through 12 for students with low incidence disabilities. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, what we're really talking about is almost two separate things. We're talking about the recommendations of the report itself, and then we're talking about a, an additional recommendation that is subject to further, to a lot of discussion, and we got feedback tonight. So, if we were to adopt the report recommendations for grade three, 10, seven through 12, and postpone a discussion on grade four, because we don't actually have a formal recommendation for grade four, and we dealt with the grade four as part of, as the postponement, that seems to me a very, a coherent way of addressing it, since the report itself is only grade three recommendation, grade 10, and grade seven through 12, and we've gotten the support from the community and from the FLECAC to introduce the new video in grade three. It's, the real question is, do we want to relook at grade four and the appropriateness of that video? Is that correct?
I guess, Dr. Payne, would you help us on that a bit?
So, Ms. Corbett Sanders is correct in terms of the recommendations that are in front of the board when you would vote. If you were to vote tonight, you would be looking at grades three, 10, and the grade seven media. So, she is correct about that.
Okay, thank you. And the recommendation, again, just a clarification, the recommendation for the new video for grade three was approved, is the recommendation from the committee?
Yes.
Is to approve that. And again, just a clarification, and I'm also, right, the grade four, whether or not you're going to keep that or not. And just to clarify, because we also, and for those who are watching on TV, we also do have the comments from the community, for the people that took the time to take a look at this. And the comments received regarding current recommendations, there were two people who supported the grade three recommendation, and two people who opposed the grade three recommendation. But so, we had four comments on the grade three. There were other comments and other things that are actually not pertaining to this specific report. Am I correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. All right. Mr. Moon, I believe you're next.
I'm not going to support a motion to postpone. I, you know, as Ms. Heinz pointed out, this came, this was, you know, put on as a new business about a month ago. In, in some years, when I had keen or interest in taking a look at tapes, I went to the school board office and took my time to watch the tapes. In some other years, when I saw that I didn't quite feel the need to go, I chose not to go, because, again, I could only spend so much time on doing what I needed to. I had to be very cognizant about that. So, we had, we had full month. I think this board is having a habit of, you know, not doing its work and keep postponing the things that that's been on the schedule, that, that, I'm not going to support a motion to postpone.
Ms. McLaughlin, did you want to go back? Your light is still on.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify something. As I understood, there's sort of debating on what's being recommended and what, and Ms. Corbett Sanders trying to maybe find the compromise. Where I understand it differently is, yes, the committee majority recommended adding this video three, and the dissenting opinion said, yes, we also prefer the grade three video, but the differential is, the dissenting opinion's recommendation was, add grade three, remove grade four. That's really, I mean, technically speaking, there was the committee trying to decide, do you add grade three and keep four, or do you just have three supplanting four? So, and to Mr. Moon's point, I just, I, I appreciate that, again, we all look at things a little bit differently, but I want to caution that we should not be characterizing any of our colleagues as not doing our work. colleagues as not doing our work. There are several of us who have said that we serve as a board to deliberate as a board, and we're not deliberating on this. Some of us are comfortable saying, whatever the committee recommended, we're going forward, and that's fine. Some of us have said, we'd like to hear from each other, and I will restate, because I'm getting ready to vote and I don't want to be characterized as someone who didn't do her homework. I've asked my colleagues to tell me why you think the recommendation of add three and don't remove four is a good idea. No one has spoken to that. So delaying it so that everybody can be knowledgeable, or at least some people be knowledgeable, I think is important for the community to be deliberative. So I'm not going to go around accusing anyone of not being deliberative. I will just describe what I think is deliberative for me, and that's why I'm supporting, supporting the postponement. And I would also appreciate that I'm not, or anyone who votes for this postponement, be characterized as didn't doing their homework. I don't think that is helpful to the board.
Ms. Strauss, I'd like to call the question.
The question has, I would, I would ask, could we let Mrs. Schultz have one last go back and then I will call for the vote unless there is important new information from someone who has not yet spoken. Schultz?
Thank you for the courtesy of that, since it was my motion. I do want to clarify that it was on our new business on May 25th, which was the night that we went till 1:40 in the morning passing the budget. We've been a little busy in the last month. We have hired an AG, we have hired a superintendent, we have passed a $2.8 billion budget, we have lost a board member, and had multiple community issues come up, and we've all just been through graduation season. I've just been to nine graduations in five, five or six days. So the assertion that at some point in the past, in a 30-day comment period, somebody had the opportunity to see this video, I think that the fact that they saw that video is the reason why we've received comments and it's been brought to us. This is the work of the board. Because it was on our calendar a month ago, we should move forward and act tonight, is not a good enough reason to say something that none of us have been to, received a committee report on when we receive committee reports on everything else. And I understand that committee doesn't report to us, but you were talking about implementing a curriculum change and embedding things into our curriculum for tens of thousands of students that nobody, sitting at this diocese scene, and we should just do it because it's on our calendar? That's a terrible reason for, for me to say we should just do it and we don't really have to know what's in it before we pass it.
All right. I will call for the vote. The motion on the table is to delay the approval of the recommendation to approve or recommend media and lesson objectives as detailed in the agenda item and is reviewed and recommended by the Family Life Education Curriculum Advisory Committee. The motion is to delay until July 13th. Those in support of the motion to delay, it's Mr. Schultz, Ms. Corbett Sanders, Ms. McLaughlin, Mr. Wilson, those opposed, Ms. Hines, Ms. Palchek, Ms. Strauss, Mr. Moon, Ms. Darnett Kofax, Mr. McElveen, the motion fails. We are back to the main motion, which is to approve the recommendation regarding the new items for family life education. I will call for the vote. All of those in favor of approving the recommended changes to family life education as posted in the agenda item, those in favor, Ms. Hines, Ms. Palchek, Ms. Corbett Sanders, Ms. Strauss, Mr. Moon, Ms. Darnett Kofax, Mr. McElveen, that motion passes.
Oh, you have to go.
I'm sorry. Opposing, I'm sorry. Those opposing, Ms. Schultz, those abstaining, Ms. McLaughlin, Mr. Wilson, thank you. Thank you for your help, Mr. Moon. All right. That motion passes. The next item on the agenda is a consent agenda. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's rules, provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Many items listed have gone through board review and documentation has been provided to all board members and the public in advance. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to the meeting. First, 5.01, approve the minutes of the April 27th, 2017 regular school board meeting. Item 5.02, approve proposed restated plan documents for ERFC in ERFC 2001. 5.03, approve the appointment of Michael Burke to the ERFC Board of Trustees for a one-year term beginning July 1st, 2017. Item 5.04, approve the appointment of Susan Quinn, Kristen Michael, and Marty Smith to the ERFC Board of Trustees for a one-year term beginning July 1st, 2017, and ending July 30th, 2018. 5.05, approve recommended media and lesson objectives as detailed in the agenda item and is reviewed and recommended by the Family Life Education Curriculum Advisory Committee. I'm sorry, we've just, that was taken off consent. It was put on for action and we already have the results for that. Sorry about that. 5.06, confirm the separations for the period beginning May 1st, 2017, and ending May 31st, 2017.
Ms. Strauss, I think that is now 5.05. That has become 5.05.
Thank you. Five, yes, I'm sorry. That's because we don't quite have a corrected script. Thank you. So 5.05 becomes, confirm the separations for the period beginning May 1st, 2017, and ending May 31st, 2017. 5.06, appoint individuals to serve on school board citizen advisory committees as detailed in the agenda item. Is there any objection to approving the consent agenda? Seeing, hearing and seeing no objection, the consent agenda is approved. New business. The following are new business agenda items. There will not be a vote tonight on these items, but action is scheduled at a future meeting. Item 6.01, approve the Human Resources Advisory Committee charge as detailed in the agenda item. 6.02, approve revisions to P2245.2, home instruction requirements and part-time enrollment options as detailed in the agenda item. This is a policy. Thank you. Superintendent matters. Dr. Lockhart.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. First, I'd like to thank the South Lakes High School community for their outpouring of support after the terrible loss of one of our students, Nabra Hasenan. I also want to thank Principal Kim Retzer for her leadership during this very difficult time. Our thoughts and prayers continue to be with Nabra's family and the entire South Lakes Tomorrow is the last day of school. It's been a wonderful year of learning. I'm very proud of our students, our teachers, our principals, all of our staff for their hard work and all their accomplishments. I do wish everyone a wonderful and safe summer. Finally, I'd like to say thank you to the school board and the leadership team. As we talked about earlier, this is my last school board meeting as your interim superintendent. It's been a pleasure and honor and a privilege to serve FCPS, the students, the families, the staff of this incredible school system. I am very much looking forward to assisting and supporting our new superintendent, Dr. Scott Braybrand. That transition is well underway and excited to welcome Dr. Braybrand back to Fairfax County Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lockhart. Next on the agenda is board reports, and I will call Mr. McElveen for a report on the Public Engagement Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So at this meeting and our next meeting, we're going to be talking about, or at this previous meeting, we talked about the Ed Summit, which remains under discussion. We now have a superintendent. The idea was to make our Ed Summit a showcase of the superintendent. However, in looking at the calendar for October, we have realized that we already have a, one Saturday set aside for the health and wellness, mental health and wellness summit. So we're exploring possibilities of combining resources and putting both on the same day. So that's going to be something we're going to bring to the board at our work session next month in about two weeks. So if everyone could be thinking whether that would be amenable, please, please do so.
Thank you, Mr. McElveen. Ms. McLaughlin, a report on governance.
Yes, I just want to, again, draw to my colleagues' attention an email that I sent to you on June 19th that gave you a summary of policy updates that are coming out of governance and being recommended to all of you. It's on new business for tonight, and we will have a work session discussion on July 10th with action to be taken July 13th. Essentially, there are two policy updates that relate to home instruction requirements and part-time enrollment options. And as I provided in the summary to you in the email, essentially what this is allowing is, right now, our high school level homeschool students can take up to two classes at their base schools, but we don't have that provision for middle school students. And we have some students who are competitive gymnast, gymnasts and other family decisions that prevent them from being full-time enrolled students in our schools. And so the Governance Committee reviewed this and determined that with staff input that we could make this workable. So we'll have more discussion about it at the work session, but I want to make sure you're all aware that those two policy updates are being brought to the board out of governance, and it had the unanimous support of the Governance Committee members. And the other thing I want to bring to our board's attention is that we talked about how we always have a July retreat with the board, and it's really been valuable every year. But given that our new superintendent will just be starting with us, and in looking at board member calendars for July, we really couldn't find time where we can do a Friday, Saturday for our standard July retreat. So the Governance Committee is going to be looking at this at our July 20th work session to discuss with our clerk and identify with the help of Dr. Braybrand when he might think perhaps a September retreat will work best. So I wanted to just sort of bring everybody up to speed on that since staff sometimes also helps us with the July retreat, and it would be good for everybody to know what is on the table and what is being postponed.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Board matters, and I will begin with Ms. Hines.
Thank you. So this is a joyful time of year, of course. End of school tomorrow. I've enjoyed going to graduation celebrations, and our, our students and their parents and families and educators have so much to be proud of and to celebrate right now, and I really enjoy so much being up there on stage in that spot where every parent and grandparent and brother and sister and aunt and uncle would like to be, right where I am, to watch those faces, walk, walk across the stage. And I do take that to heart. I take that responsibility very seriously, and it's, it's a great privilege for me. Unfortunately, this has also been just a terrible week. On Sunday, 17-year-old Nabra Hasenan, as, as Dr. Lockhart said, a student at South Lakes High School, was taken from us, from her family, her friends, and her community by an unspeakable act of violence. I knew Nabra when she was in fourth grade. I was teaching fourth grade at Forest Edge Elementary at the time, and even though she was not in my homeroom, we of course knew all of the children. I cannot, of course, even imagine the pain of her parents, her three younger sisters, her close friends, but still, like so many in the community and those of us who knew her as her teachers, I have woken every, every morning this week, heartsick, beaten down, and just inadequate to the work of moving forward and wholly inadequate to the task of helping our students move through their grief and fear and believe that they will be okay again someday. Last night, Nabra's friends and peers took those first steps forward, supporting each other and supporting our whole community as we came together at a beautiful vigil in Reston to honor Nabra and celebrate her life and her beautiful spirit. Friend after friend got up and described Nabra as I remember her, kind, open-hearted, open-minded, a welcoming friend to everyone. Several kids said she was like a big sister to them. I imagine that we have all had the blessing of someone like Nabra in our lives. I hope we all have. I'm so grateful to the students who put that together, some of whom graduated the day before. I'm grateful to Nabra's family, to the Cedar Ridge community, to Nabra's teachers and school administrators, faith community leaders, who were all there last night and all gave our community a moment of peace and unity to begin to heal together. I also want to say that I'm grateful to Chief Rossler, Fairfax County Police Department, for joining the community last night and for leading what must be a very painful investigation for our police department. You know, we don't want to forget that they're humans and they are, many of them, parents, and every parent in this community is shaken by this tragedy. So we move forward together with Nabra's spirit as our guide. If you did not know Nabra, please listen to the stories that her friends and family tell. Look at the pictures of her beautiful smile and feel the warmth of that smile. You can, you can feel it. And say her name. One meaning of Nabra in Arabic is pinnacle, a high place. And when you say her name, you lift up her memory and you make light your own heart. Nabra, we love you.
Ms. Schultz?
Thank you. I want to thank the communities. I think this may have been the first time since I've been on the board where all of the students in the Springfield District who attend the nine different high schools that they attend aligned with a calendar that no one conflicted with each other. So the Centerville Community, Chantilly Community, Fairfax Community, Lake Braddock, Robinson, South County, TJ, West Springfield, and Woodson, I was able to celebrate with all of your families on the graduation of your students. The degree of honor given to the students and their accomplishments as they cross the stage is a thing to behold. And it's, sometimes it's, the graduation itself is, you know, it gets a little tedious if you attend nine or 20 or whatever, but to really hear about the accomplishments of our students, to watch the performances, those who are military-bound and service to our country, who are in the 1% who serve, they really, they really do accomplish a lot, and it's an honor to be there, and I appreciate those communities. I do send the well wishes to Nabra's family, a family of four girls, kind of the opposite of my family, four boys, a 10th grader, I have a 10th grader. I can't imagine the loss of your child right when you're getting ready to launch them into their life. So the contrast of watching the young people cross stages and go on to the next point in their life and realize that somebody else has that, that opportunity taken away from them is incredibly disturbing, and, and we should keep them in our, in our thoughts and prayers. I do want to thank Gretchen Bulova in particular for the tremendous, tremendous effort that went into the Celebrate Fairfax on our 275th birthday as a county. The stories, including the 14th Lord Fairfax who traveled from London to be with us and, and hear about how his family history has evolved over time and how they think it's funny to come over and see their coat of arms on motorcycles and police cars, and see all of the people who are embracing history over time, Fairfax County Public School teachers who are authors, who are selling books. It really was a very special sort of parochial view into history that we live in and work in and drive through every day, and sometimes we don't necessarily appreciate. It really was a very special sort of parochial view into history that we live in and work in and drive through every day, and sometimes we don't necessarily appreciate. And the ability to bring my nine-year-old to that and sort of witness it was very, very special. And for those who missed it, I don't know if there's stuff online, but it certainly was a tremendous opportunity. I do want to thank the employees who have been here tonight. This is an issue that I'm taking very seriously. It pains me, actually, when I hear, when I hear that decisions this board has made have not fully been understood sometimes by the board and that we've impacted people's lives and livelihoods. I look forward to meeting with you over the next little while, but I do take this very seriously, and some of us are asking budget questions already. And the last thing I want to say, oh my goodness, it's a little bit emotional, is that since we were last here, there's been another horrific act of violence in Fairfax County in Alexandria. And I restrained on my town halls this spring, mostly because of the workload that we've had, which has been unlike anything I've seen in the last six years on the board, just because, you know, this is the natural path of what has happened. But I will say that the one effort that I did squeeze into a small amount of time to go and embark on town halls was entirely unpleasant, and it was the first time I'd ever experienced that. And I do a lot of community engagement. I spent a lot of time in the community doing community office hours and town halls and student town halls and meeting with people who are employees or taxpayers, homeowners associations, and I'd never experienced anything like that. And I am beseeching the community at large to take a page from what has happened in Alexandria and to tone down the rhetoric. We are all doing our very best. We may come at it from different points of view, but, you know, some of us have been the recipient of very, very unpleasant things, and it isn't necessary. We can talk, we can approach policy, we can work through differences, and we can do it with respect. And I'm just beseeching the larger community to keep that in mind because we don't need any more of that. So, thank you.
Ms. Corbett-Anders? Yes, we will go back to Ms. Palchak. We missed you.
Well, I think my colleagues shared many of our sentiments for this evening. I just really do want to wish well wishes to all of our graduates and our students. I know I'm very mindful in my community as well that it definitely takes a village. So, those of us in the community, as you see our kids out this summer, please take a moment to let them know you are there, that you care, and that you are there to support them. Unfortunately, we have had to continue to cut many of our summer programs in this county. And so, if there's anything you can do, take a few hours to volunteer, do read with some students in your community, I'm sure it would be very much appreciated. And I echo the sentiment of having thoughtfulness in our conversations and our discussions, and I hope we will continue to model that for our kids in Fairfax County. So, thank you, and please congratulate a graduate this week.
Ms. Corbett-Anders?
I'll be brief. I echo the sentiments of Dr. Lockard and Mrs. Hines. My heart goes out to your community. But I had the opportunity to be there last night, and the love and the support and the ecumenical approach that was in Lake Anne Plaza is something that I hope we can all model every day going forward, and that is how we will honor Nabra. Regarding the Celebrate Fairfax, I would encourage community members to celebrate the 275th anniversary of Fairfax County at the many different events that are going on. Each magisterial district will be having some sort of celebration, and if you go to celebrate Fairfax 275, I believe you can find all of those events. And I would encourage you, you know, summertime is a great opportunity to take a deeper dive into learning for all of our students with the opportunities through the Fairfax 275, with the opportunities at our local historical locations such as Mount Vernon, Gunston Hall, Woodlawn Plantation. I passed by Lake Fairfax last night. There are so many wonderful places that you can go and explore and share with your children, and I would encourage you to do so. I would also encourage that as we go into the summer months, be aware of where your kids are and who they're visiting. Encourage that students should not swim alone. There should be, kids should swim in pairs at a minimum, that there should be a lifeguard on duty. When biking, there should be two. And so, I would just encourage that safety is part of your conversation with your kids, bicycle helmets, things like that. And thank you for a great year to all of our teachers, and congratulations to all of our class of 2017. I was very impressed. I think in the Mount Vernon and Lee schools where I attended the graduations, the total was close to $20 million of scholarship money that our students took home, which means that money stays in Fairfax County rather than sending it to destinations across the country where our kids attend school.
Mr. Moon?
I'll yield my time to Mr. McLeveen.
Ms. McLaughlin?
I first want to extend my deep sympathies as well to Nabra Hassanan's family and to all those who knew and loved her in the community. I cannot imagine the degree of grief. And while I had a commitment in my district, I am very sorry that I couldn't be there with Ms. Hines and all of the incredible outpouring of county officials along with the community in Reston. Many of us know that Reston has a unique kinship with one another, but the fact that people from around the county all wanted to be there and to honor this lovely young lady, it's the only silver lining that we can look at a county that recognizes how powerful this loss is and to come together and to honor this young lady. And Ms. Hines especially, I had no idea that she was a young lady that you knew personally, and I will be keeping you and all of those who knew her in my prayers. It's a very difficult thing to go through. I do hope that all of us in the positions we have will continue to talk about how we promote and create an environment where children and all those in our community feel love. And that was one of the most beautiful messages in one of our graduation speeches from the Robinson teacher who was selected by the students to be the guest speaker, Brian Hazard. It was really, it all comes down to love. I do want to also say, Dr. Lockard, in the four graduations I attended, Woodson, Lake Braddock, Robinson, and Ann Dale, I want to extend to you how impressed I was with your principals, our principals, and the staff, the dedication that they showed throughout the graduation ceremonies, remarkable and inspiring. And I was so proud to be a part of this system and be there for the celebrations. It really is amazing, and I'll try to make sure and extend my personal appreciation to all of them, but I want you to know, they make us proud. To Ms. Strauss, we haven't had a chance to meet since the Cappys, so I wanted to give a special shout-out to you. That was the 18th Cappys, and my sixth year being on the board, it is truly remarkable to offer a national-level, Tony's-level celebration of the tremendous talent in the Washington region. What a gift, your husband, Bill Strauss, and you continue to bring to not just those young students, but to all of us who want to love and honor the performing arts. So, thank you. It's, you're a treasure. To our veteran teachers who are here tonight, I do want to echo what Ms. Schultz said. I think every single one of us has appreciated the outreach that you've given to us, and we are going to be looking at this very carefully, and I have full confidence that our staff and administration are going to help us in looking at this very carefully. So, your engagement is meaningful, and we continue to welcome your engagement as we work through this. I also wanted to just say that in terms of the 275th birthday celebration of Fairfax County, like Ms. Schultz said, it was pretty amazing to meet the real-life Lord of Fairfax and his wife, Lady Fairfax, that he is the fourteenth Lord, that that lordship sat dormant for 120 years, and it was his grandfather who went from California back to Maryland, to New York, and then reclaimed it after 120 years and brought that lordship back into activity. It's amazing, and the story is going to be published in a book this fall. His brother, Fairfax's brother, is getting the book published and will be doing an American book tour, and so, some of us were talking to him about how we could bring him to Fairfax County schools so that we can really allow our children and our faculty to appreciate living history that relates to Fairfax. And then, finally, I just want to say that I really appreciated the Closing the Gap presentation, Dr. Lockard, that Rich Polio presented the other day. That was very meaningful, and I appreciate the hard work that's going on there. And to all of us who were there for the gang prevention joint meeting with the board's supervisors, I just want to tell the community that I'm really proud of our police department and the work of the supervisors and the school board in being engaged and paying attention to that important issue. And to all of the 2017 graduates, please, if you are going on the traditional post-graduation beach weeks, please be safe. Parents, please give your children all the guidance needed to make good choices, and I hope everyone has a wonderful summer.
Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I would just associate myself with the remarks of many of my school board members here tonight, very beautiful and thought-provoking comments, and it is always a sad thought that it's only in times of tragedies and loss that we really sort of appreciate the value of each of us, and in particularly this special, unique gift that our children are. And so, let's try, as we move forward as a community, to remember that we are all in it together, as it were, and to hold our loved ones a little bit closer and take care of the people in our lives and be kind to those we meet and interact with each day. To all the graduates, congratulations. I would also just to say to Dr. Lockard, a terrific job guiding the school system this school year, the graduations, and the principals in the solely district are just terrific, and so impressive to see all those kids coming across the stage, so excited to move out into the world. So, thank you again.
Ms. Tarynette Kofex?
Again, echoing the comments of my colleagues about the loss of our student, my sympathies with her, her family, and the entire community. Obviously, she has touched so many, and we send our prayers and love to the family and all those who knew her. Also, thanks to all the advocates who came out tonight, particularly those who are sitting here. We do hear you, we do appreciate you, we appreciate all of our teachers, and we will continue to have dialogue on these issues. And for all the other advocates who came out, thank you as well. Yes, tomorrow's the last day of school. Enjoy, have a relaxing, refreshing, and a summer full of reading and downtime so you can recharge and refresh yourselves. And I also want to say congratulations to all the 2017 graduates. This year, I was the mom of a graduate, and I'm very proud of my daughter, who is a 2017 graduate of Edison High School. So, to her and all of her classmates and all of the other students who proudly walked across that stage, we are so sad to lose you, but from our system, but you, as somebody said earlier, and some of the compa, I think it was Laura, who said, "Once you're part of the FCPS family, you're always a part." So, soar, fly, do well, and best of luck in your next adventure, be it college, the military, or career path.
Mr. McLeveen?
Pass.
Mr. Moon gave you his time. It has been evaporated.
You know, Madam Schultz, if you don't mind, you know, one of the best graduation speeches actually came from our colleague, Mr. McLeveen, in the Forest Edge High School. If, you know, we can get a copy of the video, you know, video clip for his speech, I encourage all my colleagues to listen.
Thank you. That will be Mr. McLeveen's speech then. We'll look forward to receiving that. I think, as we've all said, Nabra's family is in our prayers and in our hearts. Thank you, Ms. Hines, for your words. That helps all of us. I also want to let the Adam Center community know that we are all mourning with you. They're important leaders in our community, and I know they will do everything in their power to support Nabra's family. Thank you, the Reston-Hurndon community. Thank you, South Lakes. This is a loss for all of us. I would like to also thank a partnership for Ludy Lewis Coats. The Heritage Fellowship Church has initiated some strong support for our school, and I particularly want to thank Ms. Sheila Coats and Ms. Joyce Tate. Congratulations to all our graduates, wonderful graduation ceremonies. I had the opportunity to be at McLean's, at Langley's, at Thomas Jefferson, at Hurndon's, also Kilmer Center, Cedar Lane, and Mountain View, and listening particularly to the Mountain View speeches from our students that talks about the challenges for many of those students. It is truly inspiring and how proud we all are of those graduates and how grateful we are to the teachers and the hard work and the great care that that staff takes of our students. So, with that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.